I stuffed it.
Okay, we're hot.
Is there anybody here? What's going on? Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standis... Oh, no, it's not 10 o'clock yet.
You're recording?
Recording.
The camera's on.
Camera's on.
F12.
Turn it off?
Sure. Yep, ready.
Mic's on? Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standis and Appeals Public Hearing for June 11th, 2019. Item number one is a rulemaking item. Proposed rulemaking under City Administrative Procedure Act draft rules.
Okay.
In recent public hearings, we have seen that many people are not aware of how our commissioners review applications or the policies the board has had in place to ensure the transparency, integrity, and independence of its rigorous review process. As such, the proposed rule that the board will vote on today clarifies longstanding policies the board has had in place for years and establishes procedures to ensure our commissioners adhere to those policies. In particular, commissioners do not communicate with applicants, opposing parties or their counsel, elected officials, or other stakeholders about pending applications. And in making decisions, our commissioners only consider testimony in the application record. Anyone is welcome to view the application record by contacting the board's office or visiting our website for further instructions. Additionally, because our commissioners serve as impartial arbiters, the proposed rule sets forth standards above those already in the city's conflicts of interest rules to preserve the integrity of the board's decision-making process and avoid any appearance of impropriety. The rule that the board is voting on today has been in progress for months. Proposed language was published in the City Record in March after being certified by the Office of Operations and the Law Department. In April, the board considered comments at two public hearings. If the board votes today to adopt the final language, the rule will become effective 30 days after publication in the City Record. As our chair noted at our last hearing on this matter, many of the comments we received fell outside the scope of this limited rulemaking but could become the subject of administrative notices and rulemaking in the future.
Thank you very much. So I'm very happy to make a motion to approve this, adopt this rule. So for a motion to adopt.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown? Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
This is adopted. Special order calendar decision items. Item number one, 27113BZ, 129 Norfolk Street, Brooklyn. I have this email from Rory?
Yeah.
What was that?
Rory's... He reached out to the appellant and the appellant has said, "Mr. Le-"
Applicant. This is an applicant.
Sorry, applicant.
Wait a second. Hold on a second. We have a problem with a mic?
Somebody's mic.
There's a lot of feedback. So was that mine? So yours? Okay. So say again about Rory?
So Rory reached out. The project manager reached out to Ms. Midyani and she emailed him back saying, "Mr. Levy, my architect advised me that the work is substantially completed and we don't need the extension."
What? Don't need the... So...
So I don't know.
She may not understand.
Yeah, I don't see her in the audience. So maybe want to do a second call?
Let's second call it maybe at the end of the SOC calendar?
And someone should give her her call.
Can we get in touch with Rory to contact her and ask if she wants to withdraw the application?
You want to respond to him?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Because we had requested as-built on this to show that it was built according to BSA approval. And we didn't get that.
Okay. Item... Continued hearing items. Item number two, 93328BZ, 12524 Metropolitan Avenue, Queens. You sign that one. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Good morning. Sandy Anosu representing the applicant, and I'm joined by Ms. Latisha Boodoo, the property owner and operator of this establishment. I attended the review session and I heard the board's comments regarding the abandoned cars. Ms. Boodoo modified the contract to include a clause... To include a clause there regarding abandoned vehicles that will be disposed of after 30 days. I'm sorry for the small print. I apologize, but I just had to print that out this morning. So that clause was added. They have no objection to including that in their contract. Also, in our previous submissions, we did submit an invoice from a junkyard, was it? And some of the cars that were on the site were taken off, a lot in fact. Also, I discussed the issue about putting a sign up on the site that abandoned cars will be dispensed with to include that on the property, and the owner has no objection with providing that sign.
Okay. I believe we received also this morning a letter from the Overndale Association?
No, that was on the other ones.
Different one.
That's on Rocky Hill.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just can't open it. All right. Okay. So then... Okay, so you do need to remove the abandoned cars from the site. Apparently, there's still a lot.
How many are?
You need to show us that they've...
Six have been removed already. Right.
No, no.
If you're going to speak, you have to come and state your name, please.
Yes, my name is Latitia Boodoo, and I'm one of the owners. We have removed all the abandoned cars. They junked. They're gone.
Oh, all the abandoned cars have been removed, as you said?
Yes, yes. I think... Didn't we give you previously, I think, the receipt from the junkyard for the cars? Yes.
Right, but so there's no way for us to know whether that's all the cars?
Oh, yes, it is. I'm stating to you, and it's done.
And what's your policy on the abandoned cars moving forward?
Well, as we have it on the paper, it's 30 days that you have to come get your car. If not, we're going to get rid of it. We're going to junk it. We're going to follow procedure. If we can't get possession of the car, we're going to call the authorities and let them come pick it up.
Okay.
But the language here actually doesn't indicate that abandoned cars will be removed. It says will be junked.
Yes.
So I just... We just want to make sure that...
So should I put it removed?
By saying junk means that you're going to remove them. We don't care about being junked or not.
Yes.
You could take them somewhere else and use it. It's up to you. But the most important thing is after 30 days will be immediately removed.
Yes, absolutely.
So I realize that the language isn't perfect, but I realize that you didn't speak to an attorney about this.
Yes, absolutely. I know. I did.
I think it's really be in your best interest to speak to them. I'm really glad. You have to speak to someone to see what your rights are as a body shop when you receive... So you could find out how you can best address it. I'm not sure that saying leftover means much, but I'm glad to hear that you have a new policy, and that's how you're planning on taking it. So you might want to reword it a little bit to better address the actual conditions that are going to be happening.
Okay.
But so... And then that would go for the sign that you put up, just to make sure that whatever the wording in the sign is? Because I don't know whether 30 days is enough for you to repair a car, for instance, if you're waiting for a part. Like, is that an abandoned car?
When's the last... When you count... When do you start counting the 30 days from your last contact?
Right, but so that's kind of what I mean. Maybe you need to advise people. Maybe that's something that you figure out, you know? You let them know, "Look, the car's been here already for whatever. If you don't take this away in 30 days, we're going to..." Something like that.
Well, that's why we have that stipulation on the sales receipt so that they know that if they leave the car and they don't do anything about it, then it's going to be gone.
Okay. So then a sign should go up to that effect?
So a sign that... I guess we should clear up the wording now. Abandoned cars will be disposed of within 30 days?
So here's the thing. You listened to our review session yesterday. We don't want to tell you what the language is. That's the reason the recommendation was that you speak to a lawyer because the lawyer will know what property rights are. That's not our domain, okay? So... But it needs to be handled, right?
So this will be the policy moving forward. Okay, we'll provide a sign, provide an updated contract with that clause regarding abandoned cars. Regarding the sign itself, I just want clarification where this... First of all, is this something we have to install now, or will it be a condition? And if it does have to be installed now, where would the board feel it's most appropriate to have it on the building, to have it on that post where the gas stop sign is? Because I know there was an issue with a lot of signs being on the site.
You're not advertising that you're taking a car, right? That's just part of your policy, right?
And actually, the owner has removed a significant amount of signs that were there before.
Right, you were supposed to show us a picture of the signs removed?
We did. In our May 20 submission, we submitted all the signage with the dimensions taped measured as the vice chair requested. They're in compliance with a commercial equivalent. And we would add this, whatever size this sign would be, to that.
Right.
You can say anything.
I would think it would be on the front of the building. Like, where's your... Where's the... Like, when you're making a deal, like, you know, somebody brings in the car and then they have to get a receipt, and then they have to pay you at the end? Where does that go on? Because I just see a storage room and what you call a break room. Where does...
There's an office inside. When you walk inside the building, there's the gas part. And then if you walk through another door, there's an office right there, and that's where that takes place. And then the bays are next door to that, but it's all inside. Show them on the floor, please.
I see convenience door, break room, storage room. Need a room.
So one of the bays, this... Excuse me. This was originally approved with three bays. So one of the bays was actually taken away, and there's a counter and office space, and... Right.
But there's no partition. It's just kind of an open area with a counter. Is that right?
It's a counter area, yes.
It doesn't have a partition. It doesn't have walls to enclose?
Not really, no. But there's like a half a wall and, you know, so it's... And there's a wall on the other side. So it's a little enclosed. You know, it's open, though. But it's not... You have to step down to get to the bays, so it's safe.
So, I don't know. I would think in that... In the place where you do business, the sign should be prominently displayed, no? So that a person comes in and sees...
So inside?
When you're filling out the forms and all of that stuff, or maybe they're paying a deposit, then that would be the most obvious location for the sign it's supposed to be. Do others agree about the sign location? Because having it on the outside of the building, maybe you don't see it. Because... So how does this work? When you drive to the place, I have my car, I just kind of pull up, go into, talk to you, say whatever. Maybe you come out and take a look. And then you're the ones who put the car away, right?
Well, the customer, either we pull it in, or one of the employees pulls it in, or the customer will pull it into the shop. But most of the time, it's the employees will pull it in.
Pull it in, right.
Yeah, because we don't want the customers to, you know...
Okay, but the customer will come to that counter inside?
Yes. They'll be inside. There's seating there. They could be comfortable, so they can look around and see signs.
Okay, so the sign should be prominent, big?
Okay, yes.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, so the only other thing that was up for discussion was the subject of landscaping?
Well, also, I just want to point out that we took the vice chair's advice and looked at the site and were able to add five additional spaces outside the fenced-off parking area on the site to discourage patrons from parking on the sidewalk. And we show that in our latest submitted plan of May 20th, we were able to accommodate five more spaces.
It doesn't discourage sidewalk parking. It's just giving more space to park on site, right? It's not like you're putting up any kind of a barrier or anything to stop what you can.
No, but we can... There was some mention yesterday of other cases where you've asked that the owner put up a sign that parking on the sidewalk will be at the owner's expense or vehicles will be towed, something to that effect. The owner doesn't object to putting that up on their property, but they can't put that on the sidewalk, on the street.
It's just it would be on your property line, right? No, but in terms of the landscaping, we had talked at one point that when... With the fence enclosure, then you wouldn't need landscaping along the shared property line with the residents. But the fencing is open.
No, along the shared property line with the adjacent lot, there is a brick wall and an opaque chain link fence with opaque slats. And that's shown on our plans and on the latest submitted photographs. The metal fence, the newly installed metal fence runs along 126th Street, and then it's a three-sided fence. Then there's a gate on the property, and then enclosed on the other side. Years ago, there was landscaping on the 126th side, but in 1985, that condition was removed by the board because they felt it wasn't appropriate to have landscaping there. And we did discuss it, and I also discussed it in our letter, May 20th letter, that also we had actually submitted in December a landscaping plan on sheet P7 showing landscaping in that area. And the board had directed us to put in an ornamental fence to match something in close proximity and another. We tried to do that fence. It was just very cost prohibitive. They were able to get some estimates from, I think, three different contractors, but it was just very expensive, so they opted for this fence. I suggested putting in privacy screening, but the landscaping would require... I know that the board favors planting beds. I just don't know how that's going to work with this parking area. Yeah. Yes, if we do put in landscaping, it's going to take away from the parking, and the space is small. So that's why we were, you know, concerned about that. Otherwise, we would have no problem with that.
Is everybody looking at a plan? Does anybody know what we're talking about? Okay. So the, you know, some of the... I remember that some of the discussion was planting along 126th Street, which having the parking inside the fence makes it ridiculous because then the cars would smash over the planting, right?
Right.
And then the other was planting along the roadway that... Along perpendicular to 85th Street, which is also adjacent to a residential. Where now two parking spaces are shown, and that one's described as six-foot-high chain link fence with opaque screening and a low brick wall, but I don't know what that means.
Yeah, that side, the properties, the apartment, the buildings that are on the south side, they're at a much higher elevation, so there is a brick wall. And then literally, I think, the ground of those apartment buildings are starting at that six-foot height. And the apartment, those buildings have put their own fences above that thing. So having planting there is not going to make much of a buffer. They have to be super tall for it to be buffer. And I don't think this land allows for that kind of a deep root plant for it to be buffer. And so we had, at very earlier discussion, I seem to remember, we had said it was okay for it not to be given that there's such a huge elevation difference between this garage and... Sorry, this gas station and the houses.
We submitted more photos than this.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I couldn't find the photo.
Can I see that?
And I know we had gone back and forth with regards to planting and no planting along 126th. And I think that's why we settled on a decorated fence in lieu of landscaping, given that there was so little space. And if we wanted to justice to get reasonable amount of planting, then it would have to be deep enough and wouldn't have allowed for enough maneuvering space for vehicles to be stored for repairs.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Then there won't be landscaping. Okay. All right, so are there any speakers on this? All right, so I actually...
Fire Department.
Sorry.
Fire Department?
Oh, Fire Department. Yeah, yeah.
Good morning, Chair Promoter, Commissioners, Board of Standis and Local Staff, and Applicants. My name is Andrew Duschinsky, representing the Fire Department, City of New York. I just want to bring attention to the board that the department did issue a letter of no objection, which was issued on June 27, 2018. Recently, there was several violations issued against the property, one of which is important is for a two-years functionality test of the gas stations. So I would ask, respectfully ask, the board to add as a condition to have that test be performed.
So say again the name of the test?
Functionality. Two-years functionality test. Two-years functionality test.
Two-years functionality test?
That's correct.
Here. Functionality of what?
Of operation of the system.
The system of the gas?
Gas station.
Okay, in other words, of the tanks that are distributing?
Yeah.
Or whatever they're... Dispensers?
Dispensers, yes.
Dispensers.
Yeah, the violation was issued in January, and since that time, there is no schedule of porting yet.
Okay, so in other words, not... Don't wait for two years. It needs to be done now?
That's correct, yes.
That's the name of the test, is the two-year functionality?
Every two years, the tests have to be performed. At the time when we was issuing the letter of no objection, it was not due yet. The due was in January of this year. And again, since that time, the schedule was not made yet. And I spoke with the unit yesterday. They don't have any request for the test.
What is the purpose for that test?
To verify that proper operation of the system. Gas station system.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was not aware of the violation, but the owner will take care of it.
Okay. So the way I'm seeing it is we then only had the issue of installing two signs. The sign that says, "No parking on the sidewalk", and the sign that has to do with abandoning cars, right? So I don't really think that there's a reason to keep this here.
Well, there was also... I'm sorry. I'm sure. There was also the issue of the letter, the...
Yes.
Of the engineer?
Commissioner Shabeta.
But to hold this up for the letter here, I don't... That's a...
Me? No, I'm okay with that.
No, we can put like a condition that an engineer will check the retaining wall and make sure that it's safe.
Okay. All right, then.
One specific language. He never...
Yeah, you already have a letter. It had to do with the language in the letter, which wasn't saying it's safe. It's saying it's safe, like, right now, as we speak. It's still standing.
He said it seemed to be flump.
Oh.
And I wasn't concerned about the flumpness of the wall. I was concerned about the safety of the wall.
Safety of the wall.
Yeah, and stability, of course.
Yeah, because we did have him come up.
Safety and stability.
Okay.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition. First condition is that there shall be no abandoned cars ever left on the site. No cars without plates on the site. That they... Sorry?
Dead storage.
Dead storage, right. But just to be clear what that means. Dead storage, no unplated cars, et cetera. That a sign to that effect or prohibiting a car abandonment, or however we phrase it, shall be installed on the inside near the office area. And that a sign on the property line will be installed that says, "No parking on sidewalk. Owners shall be towed at owner's... Yeah, car shall be towed at owner's expense, their car owner's expense. That the Fire Department condition that a two-year functionality test of the dispensers shall be conducted immediately and be regularly maintained. And that the engineer shall check the sa... A licensed engineer shall check the safety and stability of the retaining wall. Did I leave anything out? No? Okay, so based on those conditions, a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, 50937BZ, 20201 Rocky Hill Road, Queens. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the board member questions? Did the applicants... Applicants, sorry. Commissioners see the letter from Henry Euler?
Did. I'm trying to open it.
I forwarded it to you this morning.
Elise Villadere from Eric Palatnik PC. We did receive the letter as the similar ideas of the letters previously submitted by Henry Euler.
But it's more than that. It's that he's... There was a site investigation done very recently, just a few days ago, and it's giving us the current conditions as opposed to indicating...
I would like to speak on that, if I may. So we first had a hearing in December. And in December, we wanted to make sure that... We were given an April hearing so we could install all the changes, but we wanted to make sure it was what the board wanted. So rather than go and make those changes and make them not what the board wanted, we submitted a proposal and updated plans, as you saw. And then you asked us for additional upgrades to the site. So then we added additional information to the plans, and it went from a $60,000 proposal to a $74,000 proposal. So we just want the opportunity now to make those changes and upgrade the site as a whole. And we didn't do anything yet, and we... Because we are looking to make sure it's what you want, and that's where we're at right now. And we just want the opportunity. And I would like to say that this is a... Even though it's owned by Getty, it is a small operator who's operating the site. And at $74,000, if we have to change any other things, it would be really onerous on this small operator, and we have to look into it.
But I don't see what that has to do with the illegal storage of dead cars.
They're doing a revamp of the whole site. And those cars were from... They said there was like unlicensed cars. We had talked about in the community board letter that those cars were just from a congregation, I believe. I have to look at the community board letter, but a church congregation dropped them off, and then they did the repairs on site. And those were those cars that... There was like vans on the site. And they were from a church, and then they were...
So did church abandon cars on the site?
No, I just think they've been fixing them up, but I can't... No, I just think they've been fixing them up, but I can get clarity on that for the next submission.
So you're saying they're not abandoned cars?
Yeah, they were not abandoned cars, they were from a church congregation, but they weren't licensed.
Mr. Euler's letter says those cars have been there for a year. That's a pretty long repair process.
The intent is to revamp this whole site, once we get your approval. And I'm sure they'll have to be removed to revamp this.
Yeah, I understand that, but if the cars are illegally stored there, they need to be taken off now. That's not an excuse that, you know, when we start sweeping, then we'll take care of the illegal conditions, you have to remove them now.
Okay, understood.
Okay, do you want to go over, so, again, yeah?
So we had a discussion with the operator about all of your comments yesterday, and they said they'd have to relook into them because they have to reconsider the whole site if it's going to be more items that they're going to have to do, because they're already at $74,000 of repairs.
So, so here's the thing, we, as I said yesterday, we don't look at the scope of the work, that's the job of the engineer on the job, or the architect, whoever's done those drawings. So to show a scope of work, it, we're not going to verify scope of work. The drawings have to show what's going to be done, and they don't, right? So the comments that I made were, where are those notations on the drawings, where are the details that show what the fence looks like, what the planting beds look like?
Because it seemed like you were asking for additional.
No, I was repeating exactly what I said the last time, but it didn't show up on the drawings, and then the scope of work doesn't say the same thing as what shows on the drawings. So I'm not going to correct the scope of work or correct the drawings, the, the drawings govern. That's what we approve, we don't approve scope of work.
And you're asking for it all to be done prior to the site, so if you give us an opportunity, we'll update the plans and update the whole site, and you'll see a beautiful new site on our next hearing.
Say that again.
I said, as opposed to keep going back and forth with these plans, if you give us the opportunity, you're asking for this site to be revamped by the next, if we are given the chance, rather than keep coming back to you with proposals and plans, proposals and plans.
But the problem is, the plans are showing patch jobs, they're showing...
But that's why we'll show you a whole site, and it will look good, and you'll see photographs of it.
So then you're not waiting for us to approve the scope of the...
I'm, I'm asking permission right now.
So, so here's the thing, I went through a list of what's missing from the drawings. If you want to go ahead, and, I mean, what's missing from the drawings, it's supposed to be resurfacing of the asphalt. The walls of the building need to be completely scraped, sanded, completely repainted, the grills, the doors...
And we just want the opportunity to show you that.
So then I'm completely confused about what you're suggesting. Do you want to come back with drawings, or do you want to come back with the finished work?
I'm asking for the opportunity to show you a revamped site with what we have in the proposal, and we'll update the drawings to match the proposal.
No, because what you have in the, I'm not going to talk about the scope of the work, I'm looking at the drawings. What you have on the drawing says, "A patch job."
Okay.
So the answer is, no, that's not what we asked you to do. We asked you to properly repair and patch and sand and scrape the exterior walls and paint everything, and the entirety of the grills and the entirety of the rolling gates and all of that. The drawings don't say to do that. So if you go ahead and do a little bit, you're going to pay twice, because the guys are going to come, and then you'll say, "What? You didn't tell us to do that," and then they have to come back. So that makes no sense.
Okay. And then in terms of the fuel oil tank, it is behind a metal shed, even though it's next to residential property, there's a metal shed on the other side.
It's not, it's not completely, no, the metal shed is a part of it, but the...
On the other side, you said it's next to...
No, I know, I'm looking at the drawing. So the metal shed is only a part of it, why is a fuel storage tank adjacent to a residential property? Why, why does it need to be next to the adjacent residential property? Because the other fuel storage tank isn't, it's next to the planting area that faces...
And there's not really much room, unfortunately, in the site, but I...
No, but that's not the question. The question is, why are you imposing the fumes? And I know that this produces fumes, because there's a ventilation tank on top of this tank, which means it needs to off-gas, and that's what it's doing, it's off-gassing into the residential property.
So I guess now we would like the opportunity to come back to you and relook at the site and see how much it would cost and make some plans.
I have a question. I have a question. Is there any reason why this fuel oil tank that's located in the rear cannot be located along 47th Avenue, if that means taking two of the trees out?
I can ask them, and then...
Right? I mean, it reduces your scope of work, because you, you're just rem...
It doesn't, it, because you have to move the fuel tank, which is plumbed. So, of course, so there's, there's piping that goes from wherever, it goes on the interior, it's not reducing the scope of work.
The last time this case was at the board, it was in the 19...
Right.
They took out a whole gas station, so it's actually less than 10 feet, it was a bay.
That part I did not hear.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. No, but so I, I think that, your client's not here? The best thing to do really is to bring your client, because this is the speech that I gave to another one, to, to keep coming to us to show us how much it costs, isn't relevant. The job here, this is a non-conforming use in a residence district up against houses, and the variance and the continuation of the variance is, is a benefit that's being offered, but there needs to be an exchange, as in maintaining the site.
And we're looking to do that, that's why we're giving you the proposal.
Right, but so, so don't, but don't give us, you know, it, it's not relevant how much it costs to us, the work needs to be done, right? And so, and, and, and again, I don't want to look at the scope, because then it's just confusing, right? So you, I think you should come back with the drawings modified, so that whoever's doing the work and the engineer who did these drawings can control the work, so that they look the same when the work is done. So, so you heard my notes, my comments from yesterday, it's a problem to not bring either the person who does the drawings and the owners to understand what their obligations are, because those comments that I made yesterday are the exact same comments I made at the last hearing. And so it's a little frustrating, right? So it says patched as needed, that's, that's the symbol for, you take a little something, you do a little something, and you paint over just that part where you did a little something, and the rest stays terrible looking. So...
The intent is to come back to you with a fully renovated site, that you can see that it's not a bunch of...
But, but how are we going to know that, how we, how is the person who's doing the work going to know that they have to do that?
The people have been watching your hearings, just so you know, that's why they updated the proposal and highlighted the items.
But they didn't change the drawings to reflect the project, we look at drawings, we don't look at the scope, the contractor's scope, right? Your engineer needs to look at the hearings. All right, so for the benefit of the engineer, I'm going to read again, this asphalt has to be resurfaced throughout, the repair notes have to show the entire surface of all of the doors, grills, walls, roll-down gate, and its enclosure, et cetera, to be scraped, repaired, and repainted throughout, so sanded smooth, repainted throughout, not only as needed, it cannot be a patch job, right? And the fencing in the rear, adjacent to the residential property, that is behind the area where the fuel oil tank is located, which, and the fuel tank really should be relocated to be adjacent to the other fuel tank.
We're going to have to look into the, how, because as you just explained, it, it is plumbing, so we're going to have to look...
But it shouldn't be adjacent to a residential use where it's off-gassing. But anyway, that area right there has really haphazard fencing, that's not shown to be continuous, and it needs to be opaque fencing that is continuous to shield the adjacent property from the use. There's an existing high stockade PVC fence that's provided by, I think, the adjacent property owner. It should be that, it should continue that, that line. We need elevations of the fencing, because it's impossible to know what a decorative aluminum fence is. And also, we ask for landscaping details with sections through the planting beds to show that the trees will be planted in the ground, and that the work won't just be a curb and some topsoil, which is actually what it says on the drawings, it says curb and topsoil. So it needs to be a planting bed, provide a section detail through that. It's a standard detail that we, that we see on all of these applications, and the minimum depth for this is three and a half feet deep, top to bottom, as opposed to front to back. And, right, okay. And then, of course, by the next time you come, all those dead cars have to be removed. Okay. Are there any speakers on this? And I recommend that the next time you come, you bring the engineer and/or the owner, because I don't want this to be going on again, because there was miscommunication. Okay.
This owner has to fly in from Ohio, so I have to, I'm just letting you know, so I can't just tell them the day before, but now we know.
We'll bring the engineer then, because the engineer's doing the drawings, all right. Okay.
So how much time?
Um, how much time do...
This is just to, oh, sorry, this is just to...
To amend the drawings.
Amend the drawings, right, so...
You don't need a lot of time, right?
Don't need a lot of time?
No, it's just to amend the drawings, to say, show what we did.
If you could submit by July 3rd, there's July 23rd. Do you want more time? I keep going. Yeah, if you submit by July 17th, that'd be August 6th hearing, okay? So submit July 17th for August 6th hearing. Thank you.
Item number four, 86755 BZ, 6615 Borden Avenue, Queens, there's a request for adjournments on this?
Yeah.
Do they, they indicate...
Yeah.
Oh, you're here?
I have.
Oh, the applicant is here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, come, come.
You don't have to swear in.
No, no, but we, yeah, you don't need to swear in, and we know they want until the end of October to allow for planting.
Just state your name, please.
Good morning, my name is DeWakker Gupta, and I'm here representing Nazir J. Kanzada LLC.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So you want it until the end of October to allow for planting, is that right?
Correct, the fall planting's here.
Okay, so I under, I, I understand exactly what happened in terms of the weather, but the same kind of weather's going to happen in September, October, which is, rain is a great time to plant, it's just a bad time to break concrete and pour concrete. So during the dry summer months, assuming we get any, that's when the planting beds should be created, the asphalt, so, so that we don't have an excuse that when we tried to plant, it was raining too hard again in October, right? Okay, so if you could communicate that.
Right, the owner will install the planting beds this summer, and then that way be able to do the plantings in the fall.
Was the request for October a hearing request or a submission request?
I think submission request, yeah.
Okay, we could do, you could either do October 22nd hearing or October 29th hearing, it's...
Um, October 20, oh, hearing date?
Hearing, yeah.
Uh, October 29th.
29th, then your submission date would be October 9th.
Okay, great.
Okay, great, so continued hearing, October 29th, submission October 9th.
Assuming not to, I'm just thinking about long, long summer times where you don't want to kill the plants by planting early. I'd say, actually, first week in November to allow them to plant in the cooler times of October, because sometimes we have really hot Septembers.
True, so then...
Indian summer.
We can push, you can push the submission date back to October 30th, that means your hearing would be November 19th.
Okay, that would be...
That would be better.
Yeah.
Okay, so November 19th, October 30th. Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Item number five, 24503 BZ, 1611 Willetts Point Boulevard, Queens.
They requested a two-month adjournment. I don't know if we can accommodate that.
Thank you so much. For submission?
They weren't clear, but so say submission.
Uh, so from today, it's June, August 11th around, okay, they can submit August 21st for September 10th hearing.
New cases, item number six, 2016121 BZ, 920 Shore Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Is there anybody here for this one? No.
Not believe so.
So I just want to add, yesterday afternoon, we received an email from Manhattan Beach Community Group, reminding us that they had opposed the granting of this special permit for this project, because the existing building had suffered huge damage from Hurricane Sandy, and then experienced extreme neglect, and therefore likely would require more demolition than was represented by the architect. And, and they also stated that it didn't comply with the flood regulations, so they're just kind of reminding us that this was a subject that they were really watching closely. So this is a compliance hearing, there's no question that all of the existing material was removed, in fact, they admitted it, it's the owner's representative admitted it in the letter, so I would like to make a motion to revoke the special permit.
Chair Promoter?
Aye. Do I need to close this?
Do you need to close it?
Sure, close before.
Yeah, motion to close. Sorry, motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to revoke the special permit.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay. Item number seven, 22290 BZ, 80-02 Q Guards, Q Gardens Road, Queens, sorry. Aye, good morning. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Take a print, Miss.
Good morning, morning, honor of the chairperson, members of the board. My name is Stephanie Hibbert, and I'm an associate at Kennedy CMK, counsel for applicant, 24-hour fitness. I did attend the executive review session yesterday, so I'm going to start with my responses to first, chairperson, promoter's comment concerning the proof of posting of PCE hearing. There was some concern about the location of the posting. I did instruct or apply it to post it in the general lobby of the building, however, based on conversations he had with the landlord, the landlord stated that they have their own lobby, so they should post it there. With that being said, I recommended that they posted one of the notice facing outward, as one of the photos depicted, towards the outside of the PCE, and, you know, where like people walking by on the sidewalk, they could see it. It's also posted within the lobby area, common area whereby they pick up their locker room keys in another section. So that's it with the PCE area.
Okay, I mean, you're actually kind of the, the first series of applications for extensions of term that's experiencing this posting requirement, so we'll, the lesson learned will require, that we'll make our notification very clear that it needs to be posted in the residential lobby, and it'll have, you know, official stamp from the City of New York, so that the landlord or the management, building management understands that it's to notify building residents and occupants, not the PCE patrons who arguably like the PCE.
Right, okay. No problem. Also, L'Oréal had a comment as to the, let me pull that up.
General counsel.
The continuous, oh, the continuous use and substantial prejudice that the PCE would face, God forbid the board doesn't approve this application. So in our May 15th submission, we did submit an addendum to our statement of facts and findings stating, citing to the applicable rule and stating that the PCE, the PCE has been in continuous use and substantial, not substantial, prejudice would be...
Oh, you did, okay.
Right. In addition, you stated that we were to provide evidence, I wasn't quite sure... I wasn't quite sure what that entailed. So I brought copies of the lease that our PCE is currently subjected to. So I have a few copies here. Just quickly.
Can I just give one personal...
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. The counsel's...
And as an FYI, by way of background, the current PCE was... The predecessor in interest was Bally's... Bally Fitness, and the transfer of ownership happened late December of 2014. Hence, you're gonna see Bally's as the tenant on this current lease. However, based on the transfer of ownership, 24 Hour Fitness is now the actual party that's bound to this contract, and it expires in August of 2023.
So isn't Bally and 24 Hour somehow related? Aren't they related somehow?
No, they're distinct entities now.
So it's kind of like Bally and Equinox? I mean, it's that far apart? Or is it Bally and there's a subsidiary named 24 Hour?
No, it's Bally's and Equinox, like that.
That's how far apart? Oh, I didn't realize.
Yes.
So then, yeah, how does that work with this? So if they're that far apart, wouldn't Bally be the tenant and then 24 Hour be the subtenant? And then have a separate lease?
Um, I would have to... Because I requested copies of the lease from the property management, and that's what was sent over. That was the fifth modification of the lease showing the original tenant as being Bally's. But subsequently, the transfer of ownership happened in December of 2014. And according to property management, that would be the lease that 24 Hour Fitness is currently subjected to, based on the transfer of ownership.
Didn't 24 Hour Fitness take over the Bally's?
Correct.
Bally's.
Hence, they took over the lease as well.
Oh, so that's what I was asking.
Oh, okay, okay.
So Bally's become... Yeah, were they subsumed by 24 Hour? Or did 24 Hour buy Bally's or something like that?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So then they step into the position of lessor...
Correct.
A lessy. Right, right. Okay.
Okay. Sorry for the confusion.
All right, so that's what I was trying to...
Okay. Also...
There was a renewal to this lease.
That lease expires in 2023, which is the same lease that 24 Hour Fitness is subjected to. So that lease hasn't been renewed as yet. It will be at 2023 when they revisit it.
I think they're... That they're renewals every five years pursuant to the renewal option.
Paragraph two of the lease, I believe, states that the lease... The current lease expires in 2023. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't have a copy here.
Oh, you gave up your copy?
Yeah.
It does.
So where does it say where it expires?
Uh, paragraph two?
Oh, it should... No, it says fixed minimum rent term 9/13/14. It goes all the way up to 2023 in the annual... Yeah, that's true. The term of this lease is hereby extended for 10 years upon and subject to all the terms. Expiration date is hereby modified to August 31, 2023. Nothing like one of those leases where the dates are all over the place.
So that's our evidence of continuous use. And as to prejudice, basically, as you can see, there's continuous use. The certificate of occupancy also expired on August 13 of 2016, the same date the PCE expired. And as such, the PCE hasn't been able to obtain a temporary certificate of occupancy, hence our request for the waiver as well.
Right. And then the other aspect of it is there's substantial improvements that were made that would...
Yes, that's correct. So as reflected in the plan submitted in May 15th, those were the revised plans on plan labeled BSA 3. The board had requested that we indicate the changes, and that was done. It's in the bubbled area, and I could just basically give you when those changes took effect. So if you're there already, the retail space... The retail sales space that's bubbled, the previously approved plan approved by the BSA, that was a juice bar, and that was converted to the said space since November 1st of 2018. The second bubbled area, free training, the previously approved plan as well, that was a free training slash lounge area. And then that was converted to free training only starting in March of 2015. And 2015. And lastly, to the left, it says cardio area. That was converted from a circuit weight training area since December of 2014. So that was post the transfer of ownership. So those were the minor interior changes. And based on the changes, they're not controversial in nature.
Okay. And also, we wanted a clarification on the floor area.
Yeah. So that was a comment I didn't quite get yesterday.
And that's the gross floor area, so whatever's in the cellar...
With the square footage?
Square footage of everything?
Okay.
No, it was just the... It was just the floor area. Hashtag floor area of the PCE, 378 square feet. That's all. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Because most of the PCE space is subterranean. Right? That's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay, okay. And we have the sworn affidavit from the architect as to that as well. That was submitted.
Okay, so 378 square. Okay. Good. All right. So are there any speakers on this? Then I'd like to make a motion to close. Thanks very much for your responses. So motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been granted.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a good one.
Item number eight, 157-06-BZ, 2856 Steinway Street, Queens. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Good. Proceed.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Frederick A. Becker. We attended the review session. We understand the issues with the fire department, and we're in this catch 22. Can't get a BA without the CFO. Can't get the CFO because of the violations in the building, which don't relate to our facility.
Can't get a public assembly permit without a CEO?
Nope.
Submission date.
That is my full understanding. I've been told that repeatedly.
Yeah, please.
Good morning again. This is again Andrew Duschinsky, representing the fire department. I did... We did review the application, and it is our understanding that the building went through heavy renovation, change of occupancy, the sprinkler system had been modified, the fire alarm system had been installed. Actually, two fire alarm systems had been installed. There are, as applicants indicated, certain items is not, you know... It's not... They cannot impact or they cannot be in charge of, such as violations against the building can. Because of that, certificate of occupancy is not issued. However, the fire department does have multiple concerns that impact directly the tenant or the tenants... The tenant of that application. First of all, the sprinkler system. I just want to start from the sprinkler system first. The sprinkler system have to be tested every five years. A flow test and hydrostatical test of the fire department's semisconnections have to be performed. The due for that was, let me see... On 4/17/18. The violation or fire department licenses have been issued at 7/10/18. Since that time, two additional fire department licenses have been issued requiring the owner to schedule appointments to test the system. As of today, there is no appointment is available. With respect to the fire alarm system. The fire alarm system... Building has two fire alarm systems. One fire alarm system that covered the entire building, including the tenants or the subject of application, and the other one is mercantile space. With respect to the system that affecting the tenant, the violation was issued on 2/15/18. Oh, let me back. Application. The application for the system had been approved, and so the system have to be installed or completed, and the system have to be tested. The fire inspection unit did issue the violation on February 15 of 2018 requiring the owner to schedule appointment to perform the test of the fire alarm system. The test was scheduled on April 20th. However, the key contractors was not available. The sprinkler system contractor was not available. The elevator contractor was not available. So because of that, they was not able to perform the test. As of yesterday at 5:00 PM, there is no scheduled appointment. There is no request for the test of the fire alarm system.
The April testing was in...
April 20th, 2018.
18? Okay.
Yeah. So, and with respect to... So the department respectfully requesting the board to put as a conditions to have sprinkler system to be tested satisfactory. The fire alarm system have to be tested, and at least letter recommendations have to be issued. And with respect of certificate of occupancies, there should be a timeline somehow, you know, providing how the violations will be fixed and what is the expectation date of issuing the certificate of occupancies.
So the problem with our PCEs is that they're for the PCE operator. Our special permits are for the PCE operator and not the landlord of the building, right? And from what I can tell, the only... I don't know what's holding up the CFO because all the violations relate to an elevator. So there's a couple of... I think they all relate to an elevator, and then there were other... There was something else that wasn't PCE-related. So the PCE has no control over the scheduling, the repair of the elevator, the scheduling of any of the other...
If I'm not mistaken, this is one of the biggest tenant in the building.
So, right. So but that doesn't make... That means they're tenants. So that's the... That's the problem. We don't have sort of teeth against the landlord on these special permits. You know, arguably, we should have, but we don't. That's not who comes here for these applications. It's on the second and third floors of a three-story building. You're right. So, but...
And the elevators are parked, but most likely servicing those tenants.
Correct. But the PCE, unless... So I haven't seen the lease. I have no idea. And it could be that the PCE is responsible for the elevator. I don't know. So that's a different thing. If the PCE actually were kind of like a net-net tenant that's responsible for the elevator, then you're right. But at the moment, we don't have that information.
Well, as I did mention before, that the biggest concern we have is the fire protection system, sprinkler system, and standpipe system, and the fire alarm system. Again, those are directly impact the tenants.
Okay.
And again, timeline should be provided somehow to show to, you know... Because keep in mind, they are since 2004, and that's over 15 years.
So what I would like to suggest is because those two things haven't been tested and they haven't been even scheduled for testing, that instead of deciding on this PCE application today, we wait until the owner schedules with fire department testing so that they can't just kick that down the road because that's obviously what they've been doing, right?
Right. I mean, again, the fire protection systems, and those are crucial. Sprinkler system, standpipe system, and the fire alarm system.
But all of those things were installed, right?
It is my understanding it was installed. That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Who's responsible for scheduling the testing for the fire? The owner of the building. Not the tenant of the PCE? I don't know the relationship between tenant and the owner. However, those two... Three systems, standpipe, sprinkler, and the fire alarm system directly impacted the tenants.
So it's also the standpipe system that needs testing?
That's correct, yes. Well, it is a flow test. It's one combination sprinkler and standpipe system. So they're gonna flow the test... They're gonna flow the risers to make sure that there is no obstructions in the risers, as well as they're gonna pressurize the system, ensure that the system would properly hold the pressure.
So what I would suggest then is that Mr. Becker... You and Mr. Becker have a conversation about what goes on in order to schedule the testing, like how that should be done, and that we put a decision off on this until you're satisfied that at least the testing has been scheduled.
Okay.
Okay? For how long we should allow?
I don't know. It's two separate... It's two separate units, so...
Okay. So we should...
I cannot say that because I don't know how, you know, how this is...
Okay. So we'll take care of it. We'll put it on for maybe two, three months from now? Two months?
We're in July.
Like at the end of August? How about that? We put it on at the end of August? There isn't a submission because fire department will testify about whether they're satisfied with how things are going?
Right. As long as you're gonna submit, the best never will work out expedite it.
Right. That last hearing in August, Mr. Becker, is August 13th.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah. That's fine.
So we'll... Yeah, okay. So continued hearing, August 13th. Are there any speakers?
Oh, yeah. Are there speakers on this?
Yeah. Okay. So continued hearing on August 13th. No submission from Mr. Becker. We're just waiting for information from the board.
Fire department. But of course, Mr. Becker, you need to follow up with your client.
I did this yesterday. I already followed up yesterday. I...
Okay.
We beat them up. We do not have net-net leases since we don't occupy entire buildings. We don't, you know, to have a net... As if you were doing the entire building. But I've... I emailed yesterday immediately after and told them the concerns, and this has been ongoing, as the board knows. We are not happy for you. We're not happy for us.
Right. So, and I... Yeah. So what I do want to say is maybe the conversation with the landlord is, you know, they're a prime tenant, and the landlord's whatever...
No, I...
Whatever...
Whatever we can push.
Delay is holding up their ability to operate there, Jim.
Understood.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just go please on appeals?
Yes, please.
I don't hear anything back.
Keep going. Okay.
Appeals count, the decision items, item number nine, 2018-23A, 2018-24A, 2931, 31, 31. You don't have to warn him.
Yeah.
It's already closed. It's already closed.
Right, correct.
Police Foladere, on behalf of the applicant. I guess my only quick question is they wanted to know if the declaration must be filed before the resolution is released.
Uh... That would be a condition of the grant.
Okay. That was just a question.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Do we do these prior to resolution or prior to permit, this kind of deck?
Prior to resolution.
Prior to resolution, okay.
Okay.
All right, so then I would like to make a motion to grant on condition that the declaration of restrictions be recorded prior to the release of our resolution.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
That's it?
Continued hearing items, item number ten, twenty seventeen five A through twenty seventeen seven eight, six twenty, six twenty A, B, C, the shower floor, stat non. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but...
Nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palanick P C. We actually, I got the revised plans from the architect, but I didn't submit them because I got that letter from the D P and I want to make sure that all the items that need to be on the plans are on the plans from both letters.
Okay.
So I'm going to submit it in my next submission, and they're working currently on the water main connection piece of it. Fortunately, we didn't know about it when we...
Right, they add that. Okay, are there any speakers on this? So that, that's the, that was the main thing about existing, what is it? Submit a plan showing available water for the proposed development was what the open issue was from D P.
And they wanted approved, so we're getting, we're working on it.
Okay, so then how much time do you need?
I guess, give us a month or two.
A month or two?
To submit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I just want to make sure we don't have here.
Okay, how about submission on August twenty-first for hearing September tenth?
Item number eleven, twenty seventeen fifty-nine A, thirty-eight fifty-seven, Ocean View Avenue, Brooklyn? Where did we go? Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your answers before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
Elise Foladere from Eric Palanick P C. As you discussed yesterday, the architect provided a waiver, but that didn't work, so now the architect is now speaking with D P, we put them into contact with the people they need to be speaking to at D P.
And I'm just curious, because we have this as a note from long ago about floodplain compliance, has anything gone?
I don't, I don't have the drawing yet, but we will get it before, when this is all over, we'll make sure we have that and...
Right, so this, something's in process on floodplain compliance?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, are there any speakers on this? So what's the timing on this one?
I guess this one probably needs more time than the other one in case we get back additional letters from the D P. That seems to keep happening, so...
How about mid-October?
Sure.
October twenty-second hearing, October second submission?
Thank you.
Item number twelve, twelve, twenty seventeen two oh two A, forty-three Q Nard Avenue, there's a request for an adjournment on this?
They requested two months.
Assuming for submission, that's June, July, August eleventh. Instead, I'm going to put them on September seventeenth, because that's pretty light. So, hearing, continued hearing September seventeenth, submission date August twenty-eighth.
Okay. Item number thirteen, twenty seventeen three twenty-three A, one oh eight Crook Avenue, stat non, this application is being withdrawn.
Right, so then it's a motion to withdraw?
Yep.
So I'd like to make a motion to withdraw?
Chair promoter?
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice, no, no, they didn't actually...
They don't need the application.
No, they don't need it because they don't need this application at all.
Oh.
This is an as of right project.
Do we close it first, or?
Close, please. Close, a motion to close?
Okay. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to withdraw?
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Where is he? New cases, item number fourteen, twenty eighteen forty-seven A, forty-five K Avenue, stat non, do me a favor, can you just yell out for Jeff Geary? I don't know why he left the...
Didn't anticipate being on this early.
Good savanna. You sign in, you don't have to be sworn in.
Are you?
Yeah.
I was able to review the comments yesterday and hope...
Stay tuned for the record.
Jeff Geary, architect. So I was able to review the review session yesterday, and I hope to be able to clarify any questions you may have at this time. I just wanted to start, this is a corner lot in lower density growth management in a special South Richmond district. So, to be clear, in two thousand seven, an application was filed for rear addition, one-story stucco addition, where you would consider the rear, however, it is a side yard, and on a corner lot, there's two front yards and two side yards, there is no rear yard requirement. So, in two thousand eleven, for lower dense, for, sorry, for special South Richmond district, one oh four sixty-two, for corner lots, revise the side yard requirement, that one yard has to provide twenty feet.
Whoa, so slow down, right there.
Sure.
You're citing to one oh four sixty-two?
One oh seven four sixty-two.
One oh seven, one oh seven four sixty-one and one oh seven four sixty-two.
Correct.
And you're saying that in two thousand eleven, there was a change?
There was a zone change in two thousand eleven.
Where did you get that from?
To be clear, zoning text change.
Text change, where did you get that from? Who told you, did you find a copy of?
Told me. Well, we provided the zoning section directly with the date provided.
No, 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 that's not how you do it. No, no, so, okay, I can see what's happening. There was a change to that text in two thousand eleven.
Correct.
That was related to the key terms, where the word building and development and so on got played around with a lot, that had nothing to do with the change?
Absolutely, with all due respect, the application, in two thousand five, when the zoning came, was, when, this application was filed in two thousand seven, the required side yards was total fifteen, and five and...
Okay, so you're making these statements, but you must back them up with a copy of the zoning resolution that existed at the time of your application in two thousand seven, or two thousand eight, because that's when it was approved, and the time, and, and the time of going back now to D O B because you're trying to get it signed off, right?
Correct.
The actual information that both, you know, when, when we're doing this research, we, we work independently, and then we, we check our studies against each other, right? So Commissioner Chanda came to exactly the same conclusion as I did, completely independently, that there were, that the zoning revisions that in two thousand four, one oh seven four sixty-two was changed to require the, the second side yard being twenty feet, and, and there was no subsequent change. So by two thousand four, that already existed in the text, and the way that you find this out is not by looking at this little two thousand eleven that happens to be marked on the current zoning resolution, you have to go back to the old zoning resolutions and go to the, the city planning reports, where the reports show you what the changes are sequentially. So we did that independently and found no changes subsequent to two thousand four with respect to this question. There may have been a change in the word development and so on, but, so you need to show us what that is. You can't just state it, you have to show us the sections in the zoning resolution.
Understood.
Okay, because as far as we can tell, you were, it was required to have a twenty-foot rear yard at the time of the application, sorry, I meant side yard, at the time of the application in two thousand seven or eight.
And also to add to that, nothing changed with regards to permitted obstructions?
Okay.
That text also, yes, that text also has remained same.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I think you, you need to show us where that change happened. Thus far, based on my review, I have not seen it as, as affirmed by the chair.
Are we clear what we're asking for, as long as we provide the proof?
So we don't understand why you're here.
Right.
So what you would be saying, if I understand you correctly, this application filed in two thousand seven was filed incorrectly?
No, no.
Because in two thousand seven, you're saying the zone, the rule, the side yard requirement changed in two thousand four?
So, in two thousand...
That's what you just indicated.
So in two thousand four, the zoning resolution, this, for this particular section, it added that for corner lot, a twenty-foot side yard would be required. Now, when I look at the D O B approved plan, the D O B approved plan shows that there is a twenty-foot side yard in...
I, I, this is my confusion from yesterday, that there is no twenty-foot side yard provided.
Yeah, so, all right, so here's the thing. D O B's objection was very unclear, but part of the reason is because the two thousand eight drawings make reference to the wrong section in the zoning resolution. They refer to Article two, Chapter two, which doesn't apply here because it's in a special district, right? So they should have referred to the special district regulations. That error seemed not to have been really material because it shows compliance with the terms, the requirements of the special purpose district. It actually says, and I'm just reading the notes off the drawing, it says, maximum lot coverage governed by yard requirements, section twenty-three dash one forty-one B, open space governed by yard requirements, twenty-three dash one forty-one B, rear yard is not required, corner lot, so far true statements. The front yard, eighteen foot nine inches is greater than the ten feet required, okay. Side yard, twenty feet provided, minimum required, twenty feet, okay. Side yard, eleven foot five inches provided. And so, all of those are correct statements referring to the wrong section in the zoning resolution. So whether it said it in twenty-three one forty-one B actually said those things, doesn't really matter because they should have been in the special purpose district.
That was for the two thousand seven application.
Two thousand seven application, that's what I'm reading. So, when you look at the drawing, the only thing that was being proposed in two thousand seven was the addition of that little, that little extension, and it shows clearly that the extension is twenty feet from the long side lot line and eleven foot five inches from the short side lot line. So, as long as D O B was okay with that interpretation of not increasing the degree of non-compliance, which they didn't indicate anything, right, they seem to have accepted that.
Right.
Then the project complied with the zoning at the time and complies today. So, again, we don't understand why you're here. We don't understand D O B's objection, except that it got confused with the mix-up of the citation to the wrong section in the zoning resolution.
So we either find the incongruency with the timeline, or back to D O B to figure this out? Okay.
Figure it out. It's not so, if, let's just put it this way, it can't be a vesting question, because the zoning required a twenty-foot side yard in two thousand seven, and it requires it today. That section didn't change. And this other side yard, minimum of five feet, because it's a two-story building, under, under the special purpose district. So it's, it's not a vesting application. I don't know what, if it's an application at all, I, I don't understand D O B's issue.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, well, what do we, what do we do?
Yeah, yeah, right.
We need to go to D O B.
Should we put it on for continued, for like nine months from now, for Mr. Geary to go to D O B and resolve, and in which case, if he doesn't, he can either amend his application or we could...
He needs to.
He can withdraw. Or withdraw.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's to be our course of action. So Mr. Geary, we can put you on for like a couple, nine months from now, you can go to D O B, resolve, and then...
Why nine months?
I, I don't know, it's some, some period of time.
That seems too much.
How much time, too many?
I would just say, you know...
December.
Because you need to go to D O B and resolve this, nine months means you kick it down the road, right, so...
Well, whatever's the next lot available?
The next, I mean, the next hearing available is in August.
So, nobody wants to wait nine months, we'll go for August.
Sure, yeah, okay. Okay. There is a hearing on, available on August thirteenth, submission date would be July twenty-fourth.
Right, so you understand what you're, you're doing is, the next hearing is for you to come to us and say, okay, well, I'm not even sure, there isn't a vesting, well, I suppose it goes like this, you need to come to us and say either, no, I misunderstood what D O B's objection is, and it's really about this, and it's still a vesting case, still a common law vesting case, in which case we continue with a common law vesting case. If it's an error that was made back then in, in...
Two thousand seven?
Complying in two thousand seven with the zoning resolution, that's not a vesting case, that's D O B's whatever, error in, in allowing it to be viewed as complying or something, I mean, I don't know. So it's a completely different application, so I, I actually don't even know what we would be doing, other than you're checking that you understood what D O B is actually objecting, objecting to.
Will confirm.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Zoning calendar, continued hearing items, item number fifteen, two thirty-one, fifteen B Z, fifty-two seventy-eight Post Road, the Bronx, this is, request it in adjournment?
September seventeen.
Yes, they asked for late September.
Late September.
Yeah, they, they asked for like September seventeenth.
So we put it on for September seventeenth?
See if it's there.
Yes, it is already on for September seventeenth with a submission date of August twenty-eighth. Right.
Item number ten, twenty sixteen forty-four sixty-five B Z, one twenty-nine Anderson Street, stat non, there's also an adjournment request on this one?
Yes, so this is one that is the third, this will be the third adjournment, so our council, oh, do you want to come up, Elise?
So I was told...
Your name for the record?
Oh, Elise Foladere, on behalf of the applicant. I was asked if we, they understand they're getting a dismissal letter, they asked if they could have eight weeks, the owner is working with a title company to research the history, and it's taking a little longer than expected, because they're figuring out discrepancies between the deed, tax map, and survey.
Okay, so eight weeks is their last chance.
Okay, understood.
It's two months. Can I give you more time?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to put you on for September seventeenth hearing and August twenty-eighth submission.
Item number seventeen, twenty seventeen two forty-six B Z, sixty-one sixty-two Crosby Street, Manhattan?
They requested a withdrawal on this, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
I think council is here.
Oh, is council here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You can sign in, you don't need to be sworn in.
Oh, sign in, yeah.
Sign in, yes, you don't need to be sworn in. That's okay, bye. Should we state your name for the record?
Good morning, Maria Papasavastoson, site, site Barth Shaw, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, so you requested a withdrawal without prejudice?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to close?
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen, twenty seventeen two sixty-five B Z, three eighteen, three twenty, fifty-fourth Street, Brooklyn?
They requested in adjournment because they're amending the application and adding a special permit.
Is it September, October, when should?
Oh, I think it should be maybe like November.
September tenth?
She requested September tenth.
Really? Is that enough time?
Did we put it on for September tenth?
Did we put it on?
I'm not sure. I don't think we did, though.
Fifty-fourth Street? No, it's not on September tenth.
How many do we have?
We have twenty-four.
Can we put it on September seventeenth? Did she say she was unavailable in the seventeen?
Yeah, so let's do that, because we have two minutes.
It's a lighter calendar, so we're going to...
Yeah, that is a new application.
We're going to submit, we're going to, sorry, schedule continued hearing for September seventeenth, submission date of August twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Item number nineteen, twenty eighteen dash eight B Z, eighteen twenty, Crosby Avenue, Brooklyn. Raise your right hand, this is for someone, okay, right. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Please sign in and proceed.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palanick P C. I'm here with the architect, Mr. Gambino, and in the audience, I have the owners, just in case. So firstly, I'm going to pass you the letter as per Commissioner Sheta's request. And I also have a water bill from two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. What I... Sometimes I wear some things.
Yeah.
Thanks. It's nicer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Were these submitted?
These were not submitted, but they can be, depending on...
How we go.
How we go. So firstly, in terms of continuous use, I wanted to restate that in the notice of comments, we gave you leases, as you brought up, and then, for the years that we didn't have that, we gave you a letter from Petro, the company that states that they operated and leased the site until 2017, when we filed. It was a little bit hard, because it changed hands, but the people who are here today are the original Bayside Fuel Oil people. They still own the site, and you can even see, we have a board history photographs. Bayside Fuel has always been there, and now it's operating, being leased by Subaru dealership, but it's still owned by the original Bayside Fuel Oil people.
Right. But actually, that's an interesting, let's say, proof that a lease has nothing to do with an occupancy, right? So the sign says Bayside, and the occupant is Subaru. So, right, so that's...
Well, the sign isn't there anymore.
No, but you could still have a sign.
So in other words, if Bayside continues to be the owner, and they lease to Subaru, and Subaru is a car rental establishment, just to say, right? Then the use as truck storage and repairs is not continuing. We, there was a little debate amongst us about whether a lease would establish use, and a lease doesn't, because you can always sublet to somebody else who's using it for a different thing, right? That's why...
And I thought, I thought then the last, we discussed about trucks last time, and I thought we were, that discussion about how trucks were, that minor repairs were done on trucks at this site, and that's still kind of what's done today, is this minor repair of automobiles.
Right, but so you didn't write any of that down?
I didn't write it, because I thought we discussed it.
No, but when you write, when we discuss it, it's supposed to be then committed to writing. That's how we know how to write the resolution, right? But in addition to which, it wasn't clear. So, what became clear to me, by looking in the resolution from 1991, was that the board in 91 understood that it was motor vehicle repairs for the Bayside Fuel Oil Company, right? None of that was actually stated in your statement of facts. So that was something where there we were, left with that same question, how is this continuity of use, if it was being a fuel oil delivery place, right? We went through that at the last hearing, there are fuel oil delivery trucks, and then we kind of came to the conclusion that it must be that they're maintaining those trucks, but we didn't have any continuity on that activity, right? So that should have been written. And then, when Subaru becomes the less C, what do they have to do with a fuel oil company having their trucks in there, repairing their trucks? So, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a fuel oil company, but it does have to be trucks, and the trucks being repaired, right?
Still motor vehicles and trucks being repaired.
But how do we know that? So it's leased to Subaru?
You want to...
Yeah, and that was something you were supposed to provide us proof of, right?
Hi, I'm Steve Gambino, applicant. The request here is simply for the continuation of the Use Group 16.
Correct.
So the Use Group 16, as stated in their existing certificate of occupancy, is simply for the repair of trucks and automobiles.
Right.
During the occupant, when the building was occupied for the oil company, they were repairing their own vehicles and trucks, still Use Group 16. What they're proposing now is the same scenario for motor vehicles, which now would be Subaru, still Use Group 16, no change. So the continuation has still always been for the repair of these motor vehicles under Use Group 16. The only difference from their current certificate of occupancy is that there won't be a spray booth. That's it.
So wait a minute, so, why, how does Subaru use this space?
They will store vehicles and do minor repairs to the vehicles.
They're storing, what kind of vehicles?
Cars.
Cars that are...
Motor vehicle.
No, 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 I'm hearing the motor vehicles. I'm trying to understa, what we're trying to check is, because the community board is very concerned about this, that this does not turn into basically a general motor vehicle repair station?
That is not what the request is for.
Is it your statement that they're only servicing their Subarus at this location?
That is correct.
So the, when you say their Subarus, these are Subarus that are for sale, or for rent, or what?
The dealership related to this is right across the street.
And the dealership sends the cars...
Not that that really matters, right?
Yeah, it does matter. No, that's what I'm trying to understand.
No, no, it really doesn't, in the sense that dealership doesn't have to be across the street.
No, no, I think it's good to show that this is the actual use that is happening. There's a dealership across the street which sends the cars over to this location, the cars get repaired, or sometimes held on the lot, to be sold.
Or prepped for sale.
Or prepped for sale.
Correct.
And I think the compliance officer actually saw our owner on site, and they walked around together.
So that's, that's the only, the only change from their current certificate of occupancy from 1994, is that the spray booth, which has been, has been a little bit vocalized from the community, that, hey, is there going to be a spray booth here, will no longer exist. And it does not exist now, and it has not existed for some time, just was never utilized.
Sorry, clarification. So it's currently Use Group 16B, or Use Group 16C?
Accessory versus the actual...
It's not accessory.
No, no, Use Group 16B is automotive service establishments, and Use Group Service, Use Group 16C is vehicle storage establishment. So...
I don't believe...
16B is automotive service establishment, which is automobile, trucks, motorcycles, or trailer repairs, automobile laundry, provided that the zoning lot containing the reservoir space would be noted on 10. I don't think that's what this is. I think it's the first one. Automotive service station, open or enclosed, provided that facilities for lubrication, minor repair, washing is permitted, only located within completely enclosed building.
Understood.
Whereas the 16C is vehicle storage establishment, which is, which is commercial or public utility vehicle storage, open or enclosed, including accessory motor, motor, accessory motor fuel pumps, dead storage of motor vehicles, public transit yards, open or enclosed, including accessory motor fuel. So I just want to know which one was approved for, B or C?
Actually, the certificate of occupancy did not designate...
Does not designate.
Whether it's 16C.
I see, okay.
It simply put in Use Group 16, and described the use, which would be, was a garage for trucks, motor vehicles, repair shop, body and fender work, incidental painting and spraying office, and locker rooms.
Like a B.
And then, of course, it had also a measure, I think it is, you said B?
No, 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 that's what I'm concerned about. B is very open-ended. So B is what the community board's concerned about. Automobile, truck, motorcycle, or trailer repair, right? That makes it B available to anybody, as opposed to C, which was actually a vehicle storage establishment. It's where the fuel oil company kept their trucks, and they made incidental repairs to their trucks. So the store, the repairs were incidental to the storage, not the other way around. So the problem with what you're suggesting is that potentially, it's not being an accessory repair, it's being the principal use, which could then easily shift to it not being Subaru who's located across the street, but Joe's Motor Repair. And that was not what the original grant was. It was an accessory to storage.
I would agree with you.
Okay, so, but you said that this is being used to repair Subaru's cars, right?
Right.
So how is that an accessory repair activity?
But just to clarify, he said...
But it's not saying, it's not accessory.
Sorry, can I, one second? The first thing he said, though, is Subaru stores vehicles and does minor repairs.
They prep the cars there.
That's the first...
It's for the cars on storage. For the cars that are being stored there, is the repairs...
That is correct.
The repairs associated to the cars that are being stored there.
Is that act...
That is correct.
Ted, what, just what Ted Rick is...
At the time of the visit, he had no equipment there to repair. You guys were really just storing vehicles there.
That is correct.
There was no, like lift, or anything like that, to put a vehicle on, so I would definitely say it looked really just like strictly storage, at the time of my site visit.
Okay. So that, that's how we're going to have to limit it, otherwise it opens up a broader scope of...
I would assume that, that this, this BSA variance would be more tailored, in terms of the way the C of O would have to be written, so...
We certainly will be in the future.
No, I'm assuming that, because that's not the way they would have written it in 1994. It wasn't, they didn't designate it that way on the C of O.
And that's what you're, that's what you're looking for?
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what you're looking for?
They're looking for this...
Accurately reflect their operations on the C of O.
No, no, but I want to make sure that they, that the operations accurately reflect the scope of the approval from 1991, which was motor vehicle repairs to be limited to vehicles owned by the fuel oil company that are being stored in the building, right? So that was the limit. So in this case, it would be repairs are limited to the cars that are owned by...
The dealership.
A dealership.
If I, yeah, if I may, I don't think he's disputing that. I think he's just saying the board's resolution perhaps didn't indicate that the CEO should be so explicit, and he would hope that the next approval, we would be explicit.
I understand that, I'm just trying to be explicit, because I'm trying to understand what the use really is, and make sure that they understand that it's going to be extremely limited, so that it can't be then transferred to somebody else who's going to turn it into Tony's Auto Shop, right? Or that it might be extended to already purchased vehicles that are coming in for servicing. Right. Which then more closely resembles what the community board was concerned about. Right. What, what'd you say?
And that's not the intention.
Stand in front of the mic?
Sorry, and that's not the intention, what she just said.
Right.
It's not the intention. And I think that the community board got really scared, because we went through the history, and they all got a packet, and they read spray booth, but we are, it's not there anymore. It was just rehashing the history for the board, and I think that really scared them, but that is totally dumb.
Okay. All right, then. So I guess my question to council is, we had asked for a lot of things to be wrapped up in the write-up. Are you okay with it not being modified in the statement of facts? In other words, the statement of facts didn't make any of this clear.
But it's, it's been stated, it's been clarified in the hearing?
But that's what I, I'm asking you, if you're okay with the amount of detail there is on the record, because you're going, as opposed to a submission that would clarify in the statement of facts.
Not to be coy, but really the question is whether there's enough in your, in the record for you to make your findings.
I mean, we could, if, if... I don't know that there... So I think what we did have, so the issue was about continuity of use that was still open, so can you explain to us what the...
So Bayside Fuel gave to Petro, which we got a letter from them saying that they used the site, and they use it in the same exact way as Bayside Fuel.
Okay, and so, but what's the water board, you handed that stuff to us, what is this?
I handed that to show, it's the only portion I could get right now to show you. You asked for some sort of bill, or something showing use, but that's all I could get right now, we don't have anything from, it takes a while to get stuff from Petro, because they're not operating the site.
Okay.
This was showing use in 2016.
And 2006 and 2008, but you still have a bit of a gap...
Yeah.
That you have to close.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we have you close that gap in a written submission, but we can give you like a quicker...
Right.
We have, we have spaces available in the next couple of months.
Okay, and so then, this letter, I just want to clarify, because for the, we've been handed documents that we should talk about, because otherwise they aren't acknowledged, right? So we received these water board bills, as Commissioner Otley Brown said, the dates, 16, 17, 8, and...
2008.
And one more?
2006.
Six, okay, so we have some gaps, and then we...
Specifically with you, like what kinds of items?
You're asking what are the gaps?
Yeah, or, no, not...
No, she's asking for the evidence.
Petro, because we have that.
Anything that's in Petro's name, if, being that you're actually contacting Petro...
Yeah.
Anything that's, any kind of bill, electrical bill, that has their name, that their, shows that they're actually got, had an active business at that time, at that site.
Would leases suffice?
No. Leases are a right to...
So leases...
They should still be vacant, but you have a lease covering it.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, okay, so we still have the gap, and Commissioner Sheta, are you okay with this engineer's letter?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I have a question, it's more of a clarification from Commissioner Otley Brown. If, let's say, any delivery of material was made to the facility, would that, to Petro, would that also be counted?
That would be good, as long as it shows that Petro was actually using that site, and it was in use during that time. We've had that on another case, we, that was the best one, it was proof of delivery of oil, that means you're using it up. Right. And it was also receipts that they had sold oil, right? So they also had that. Those are the best to show an actual operation, but short of that, then it would be utility bills.
Is there, is there a relationship between Petro and your client, that they can get this information?
Yes, but it's, we've been reaching out, it's just a little difficult.
And you've tried to get it?
Yeah, we'll work on it deeper.
Okay.
We got the letter.
Okay, sorry, I'm, okay, then, are there any speakers on this? All right, so then, I really, you really do need to clear up your statement of facts. It needs to state very clearly what your proofs are for continuity of use, what the activity was, i.e. that it was owned by Bayside Fuel Oil Company, and that the trucks that were used by the fuel company were stored on site, and the minor repairs were done for those trucks. And then, when it was taken over by Petro, same, same. And then, now to explain very clearly what it is that Subaru does as the tenant, I guess, of this site. Because I just want to say, in your statement of facts, I read this, it says, "It's occupied by a Subaru dealership which, quote, 'leases it to continue to operate a vehicle truck garage with accessory uses.'" It's not a true statement, based on what we just heard, right? There aren't trucks, it's not a truck garage, right? So you need to make a correct statement about how Subaru will be using this, right? To satisfy them, the, the terms of the original grant, okay?
I just wanted to do motor vehicles and trucks, because they have all different types of...
So be more precise when you write something, because words...
But they have, why I use the word trucks.
Yes, be precise, words have meaning, right? If it says truck, I hear truck.
I want to go back to some earlier comments that we had made, and this was a concern that was raised by the community, that vehicles were being parked on the sidewalk. I'm not sure if we had asked last time for signs on the wall indicating that...
We just have a sign that says do not park, right? You do have a sign?
Do not park, right?
Okay, can you just...
I'll just send a picture.
Right, okay.
Because I saw this.
And did you provide an operational plan indicating how vehicles will be removed, if anybody's...
We did a general one, that's also on the plan, but I can, we can speak more about how they'll be removed. I think it goes into like lighting, that are...
Yeah, it's not much, so, so the operational plan, really, that's the thing where you're expanding on, what is Subaru doing with this site to comply with the terms, right? That's the operational plan, not just that we'll turn the lights off when it gets dark, right?
And I think when the light, somebody can still come and park, and it can be parked overnight, which is even worse. So you still need to figure out a way to ensure vehicles are not stored on the sidewalk.
Right.
And there's a greater chance of that happening, if it's a dealership, actually. That's my view, so, you need to...
And there are signs there.
Yeah.
The signs are there already?
Yeah. Yes.
So if this is a dealership, are potential customers, when they come, do they come and park their car inside or is it just the vehicles are stored? The customers are not coming there? So the customers are not coming there? Okay.
This better be Subaru driving their own cars into this building to store their cars before they're sold and they make some minor little repairs before sale, right?
I think you need to make that very clear in terms of the operations of what's going to happen so that we, what we are going to impose, it's just going to be storage of Subaru vehicles.
Yes.
It's not a leasing office space or people coming and going other than just the employees of Subarus and those who are maintaining and repairing it.
Okay, so... How much time? How much time would you need?
It's all pretty much for me, so not that much time.
Three weeks, five weeks?
Three weeks.
Okay. So then you can be on July 23rd, the submission date of July 3rd.
And then this material that you submitted here needs to be submitted with the gap fillers, right?
Do you think by July 3rd is enough time to contact Petro?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Item number 20, 2018-25BZ, 109 Workman Avenue, Brooklyn.
They requested an adjournment.
Yes, to mid-August, actually.
To August 13th? Oh, hello.
Hello, Eric Palatnik. Yeah, August 13th would be great if that pleases the board, or August 6th.
Either way, it's the same. Okay, so August 13th is fine. Submission date of July 24th.
Great. Thank you.
You want to sign this? Sorry, Eric. Item number 21, 2018-48BZ, 5205 Holland Boulevard, Staten Island. Sign. That's where you... Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Proceed.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Philip L. Rantula. My client is more than willing to do whatever the board requires. The request for the new opaque fence was never made before, but we'll certainly do it.
Okay.
As for the sign, plans note that the sign is to be relocated. And you're wondering why we didn't do that?
Yeah.
We need a board approval to file a sign up.
Oh, to get the permit, okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was still a proposal because it sort of hasn't come up in discussion. I just want to make sure it's still...
Correct. And legalization of the attendance booth.
Yes, okay. All right then, so...
Excuse me. Six-foot-high vinyl residential type fence?
Ideally, it would be eight if it's permitted by code. I just don't know what the rules are for putting up a fence.
In a residential district, six.
Okay. Even though it's adjacent to, you know, so I'll just say the ideal would be eight. If you're allowed to put up eight, do eight. If not, then six is what we get, right? And it just should be opaque, right? And cleaned out from behind before they install.
Well, it was.
No, actually, your helpful photographs that are taken from inside the park showed debris. There's like this white thing that's located between the park fence and the business fence.
I didn't see that. And I'm the one who took the photographs.
Uh-oh.
So if you came up, you could see, you can just see a lot of junk?
What you're seeing through the fence is the two oil storage containers.
There's this white thing which looks like an old planter or an old piece of plastic or...
You're on view five?
I don't know what view number is.
Or view...
Seven.
The white peeking through, peeking above the...
No, below. It's really, it's on the ground.
Oh, I see it. I see it. Okay.
So anyway, you can see that the slats are really translucent. They don't really...
Got it.
Prevent the view. So, okay, so that's the goal, to just make it less terrible looking?
So that fence that's there right now is four feet high. It's not six feet high.
Right, I know.
So I'm making it six.
Right, but the city fence or the park fence looks like it's a 10-foot fence. So the ideal would to be really high to conceal that thing, the building, from the public who are in the park. But if it's not allowed to have an eight-foot fence, then I just don't know. It seems like sometimes 10-foot fences are allowed. I don't know what the rules are.
It depends on the zoning district usually.
Okay. Okay, so that would be the only thing. If you could do that quickly, then that was the only open issue for me, okay?
I'll just need about three weeks.
That's fine.
Can we close for a decision?
Yeah, we could. Are there any speakers on this? Okay. So you want to pick a time before we close?
So submission in three weeks? Is that what you were suggesting?
For a hearing in three weeks.
Submission on three weeks.
Great, okay. So that could be July 23rd?
Okay.
For a decision? And a submission would be July 3rd.
That's okay. Is that enough? That's three weeks.
That's three weeks from tomorrow.
July 3rd, submission.
Yes, July 23rd hearing.
Done. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close, thanking you in advance for your cooperation.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 22, 2018-96BZ, 145 Ludlow Street, Manhattan. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Proceed. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC for the applicant. Joined by Jeff Catanachi, who is representing the applicant. I know that the board responded that the photographs that were submitted were acceptable and that there was additional correspondence with the neighbors directly above the premises. We're pleased to report that we seem to be heading towards a resolution with regards to any noise emanating from the facility. Jeff can testify to some of his direct conversation with the neighbors, but we have ordered mats which, upon the last testing with a neighbor present on the immediately adjacent floor, had muffled the entirety of the noise with regards to weight drops. Those mats will be fully delivered on June 20th, so we anticipate installation of the mats that week, after which point we'd be happy to come back to BSA and hopefully we'll have a resolution of all issues. The most recent correspondence was with regards to noise, which is primarily going to be addressed by those mats, which were weight drops and there was some use of ropes, which will be affected by the placement of the mats as well. There was some discussion of bass with regards to music at the site. There was additional limitation placed on the bass by Jeff. And most recently, there have not been any negative comments from the neighbors. So we're happy that we're kind of coming to a resolution on this and we'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
We have an updated chart, you know, it came through for June 10th and June 11th that say noise is still present but muffled for weight drops from one of the apartments.
Oh, okay. So that's interesting in terms of what your acoustical people are doing. If the noise is still present and muffled, were the mats that you're intending to purchase or did purchase, I saw you placed it, were those the mats or this is the next level up?
So, Jeffrey Catanachi. So the mats that are present now are the like temporary mats. Those are the ones that I went out to Walmart and got right away after the last hearing, just so we had something on the ground. Those are the pictures that I took.
Right.
The new mats that were ordered, we don't have them yet. So those will be the ones that we'll be replacing those. Those are the mats. We ordered one half mat to test it. And that's when the testing was done. And with the testing, you could hear, with the temporary one, you could hear it was muffled. With the new mat, the sample mat that we got, you couldn't hear anything. And the second floor tenant was there and she verified it. So those are the ones we bought. Those are the ones we're getting delivered next week.
Okay.
But this is the weight drop. How about the bass? The bass issue?
This was, that was the first time we had heard from her. She said something about that she could hear the bass. I think she just got home from college. So this is, as you're aware, the last time we were here, Tom on the third floor said that the music wasn't in issue anymore. So that was the first time I had heard something from her. I immediately adjusted the volume right after I talked to her. I haven't heard anything since from her. But if she has any, if it affects her at all moving forward, we're happy to adjust it more, relocate the speaker if we need to. But this was the first time we had heard of it.
Okay. Question. Can you get us the information on what the limiter level is so that that's something where at least we know what the bass kind of limitation is? Know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't exactly know what kind of product you'd want.
No, no, no. What I mean to say is, so the limiter is dialed to a spot and then you lock it, right? So the spot to which it is dialed must have a number.
Yeah. And there's several dials.
Right. So maybe you could tell us what the, to what level it's been adjusted so that we're, it's at a good range?
Okay.
So in future, if there are problems, at least there's some place to refer to that it should have been at limiter level six or whatever the number is, right?
Sure. I can take a picture of that and then I have it.
Okay, that'd be good.
Exactly where it is.
We actually have a picture of the limiter, but it's really...
The dials.
Oh, okay. Okay, so should we wait until we get a sign off from the tenants or the residents on this? Is that the best idea?
So they install the mats in any event?
Yeah, so your mats are coming soon, so we could put this on for very soon thereafter, right?
Sure.
Are there any speakers on this, actually? No? Okay. So...
We can put it on for July 23rd.
Okay, or even sooner. Is there anything early or no?
There's nothing. We have 29 on June 25th. We have 31 on July 16th.
And I believe they said they can install around July. That's what they said.
Say again?
I believe they said they can install the mats around July.
Yeah, they're receiving them June 20th.
Yeah, and then the...
They should install them like the minute they get.
It's going to be around July.
They're going to install them the week of the 20th and then they'll have two weeks to...
Test it out, right? Then they have to test. Okay, so that works.
July 23rd?
Yeah.
That works, okay. So submission July 3rd for a hearing July 23rd.
Will that be enough time from the time they receive the mat and they test it to submit something for July 3rd?
Well, they submitted they'd be installing the mats on the week of the 20th.
Assuming we get them on the 20th, it'll be installed the next day.
They'll install them right away. And then the neighbors have a chance to experience the classes.
Maybe two weeks.
And they're giving logs, so we'll get the logs. And by the way, this isn't something where I feel like you need to have a submission three weeks in advance. If, you know, for instance, we got a log this morning indicating that in the last two days, X, right? So the logs, as they continuously are submitted, are the most helpful because it tells you whether your mat installation really is working as opposed to the first day or...
And we intend to continue to communicate with the tenants so that, you know, we find out if it's working.
Yeah, no.
That's what we've been doing and it's been working that way.
We appreciate that you are in communication with the tenants and working with them.
Yeah, yeah. Because in the other PCs where we have difficulties, it's the lack of communication that fails dramatically.
I just want to point out that July 4th is right there, so people may not be around for vacation, may not be around. So I just want to make sure in terms of the testing, if they're trying to coordinate with the tenants and if they're not there, be a factor of that.
And I guess we can also just say for the project manager, if they don't submit by July 3rd or they want to submit more after July 3rd because of the holidays, that that's okay. It won't be an administrative adjournment.
And we saw on their email communication...
Or close to hearing date.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We saw on their email communications also that they're in constant contact with the upstairs neighbors. And in the case of the one neighbor who was recuperating, who said that you couldn't come in to test, they were aware that it's not, it wasn't a good test date or need alternate arrangements. So there's a good email trail showing communication, which we appreciate. Okay. All right then, so we have the dates and thank you very much for coming.
Okay, it's currently 12 o'clock. Can we take our five-minute break? Back on the record at 12:09 a.m.?
Yeah.
12:10.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the record. We continue with the zoning calendar, continued hearing items. Item number 23, 2018-140BZ, 100-03 North Conduit Avenue, Queens. Mr. Palatnik? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? You dropped your hand while you, I'm going to restart now. Take the pen out of your hand, raise your hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. Can't put your hand there.
I wish I was left.
Oh, you should, it's a 1-1, Eric. No, no, no worry about it. Forget it. Okay.
Hi, Eric Palatnik, who wishes he was a lefty today. Good morning or good afternoon. Nice to see you. We attended your review session yesterday. And we have for you a handout, which I'll pass up, that doesn't have anything new, but sort of encapsulates everything.
But it's not an email trail, I hope. We're not going to rely on an email.
I know you're not. The first page is, the second document is a letter from Stonefield, which should have been on top, which summarizes what's going on. That's really the letter that should have been on top, not the email. And the third attachment is Con Edison.
Right. Where's the simple thing?
I know. We're trying to get you a letter from DOT. I'm just giving you all this because my client is here.
We've seen this.
I know you've seen it all. So we would ask for a one-week adjournment?
Okay.
If you're not satisfied with all this. We have spoken to DOT. They are kosher and okay with the application as presented. Stonefield is here. They've spoken to, uh, DOT. DOT is okay with everything. It's provided we got an okay from Con Edison. We got the okay from Con Edison. So if you give us a few more days, we're pretty confident we'll get a letter from DOT.
Are there any speakers on this? I'll be watching schedule wise.
Uh, we unfortunately don't have, I mean, we have 29, I, I, it's up to the board. You have 29 cases on for June 25th. 31 cases on for July 16th. We have 21 cases on for July 23rd.
This is for July 23rd?
July 23rd?
Yeah.
So that would be a submission.
Also gives you more time to have the DOT response.
Would it be possible, I'm just out of town on the 23rd and we're okay with DOT. Would it be possible, we'll have a letter for you. I don't even think we'll talk hopefully at the hearing.
So is it okay to what?
Is it okay to put it on for the 16th and we'll come with the letter? You're probably out of town on the 23rd.
July 16th, you mean?
Yeah, and we won't testify really.
Thirty cases.
We won't even speak. You'll hear the quietest Plotnik you've ever heard. I'll give you a letter from DOT. You'll have it before the hearing even starts.
And what's the one before?
June 25th.
This is just been.
Sorry?
This is just a letter you're reading?
Yeah, I know, but letters take time to look.
No, 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 I'm just saying it's only a letter, right?
There are 28, 28. Let's put it on for them, June 23rd.
June 25th?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Things on here with a lot of preparation, right?
There's, there's, yeah, there's Ziriga, there's Amsterdam.
Yeah, that's, it's really tight.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm an innocent.
Yeah, yeah, no, so, you know, you say you're not gonna speak, but meanwhile, we're preparing for the cases.
Yeah, no, I understand.
That's the part that we're looking at. So Commissioner Oatley Brown's concerned about that one. All right, I'm sorry, we, we need to put it on for July.
July 23rd.
Yeah.
I just won't be around. Could we possibly just do it on the 16th?
No, so that's, but why do you need to be around that you have?
You weren't gonna talk.
You were not gonna talk, so you don't have to be around.
The vice, I was just concerned, this Commissioner Oatley Brown just mentioned something, that there were some other items. I wasn't.
No, 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 not related to you.
Oh, 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 okay. Oh, I thought, okay.
No, no.
You have Ms. Wolf there. You have Ms. Wolf there.
Yeah.
All right, so.
July 23rd.
July 23rd, if that's what the board.
Submission is July 3rd, but I anticipate since it's DOT, we would accept it whenever it comes.
Yes, right.
You got July 23rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 24, 2018 141 BZ, 1103768 Drive, Queens. Just raise your right hand and, you'll sign in later. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
Okay.
Eric Plotnik. We attended your review session yesterday and we brought back to the owner what you said and the owner said they'd like time to redesign.
Okay. And I'm just gonna reiterate, if they don't like how they're going to have to modify the shape of the house, and as of right, house can be exactly that shape, right? So just with, just with less attic space or something like that, right? Okay.
How much?
Uh, if we could have a hearing dated on August 6th or August 13th, whatever pleases the board.
Enjoy. They're gonna redesign a whole house with enough time for that?
Yeah, Jerry Cland. Jerry designs houses, that's all he does, design houses.
Normally the design takes some time, but all right.
By the end of, I mean, if you want to put the hearing on for September, that's fine too, with the submission date in August.
I'd rather put it on for August. I just want it to be ready as opposed to yet another not, okay, so.
Jerry, Jerry said he can get it done within a month, so that's.
Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so, um, I want to make sure that what's submitted is responsive and has the amount of walls retained that are required to be retained and no arguments about why they don't need to be retained. And that, um, all of those other findings need to be made, right? The neighborhood character finding, et cetera.
Understood.
Right? There were a lot of open issues. Okay.
Okay, so continued hearing August 13th, submission July 24th?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 25, 2018 156 BZ, 80-97 Cypress Avenue, Queens. You got it later. Team? The rest of the team? How many more? That's it? Two more? Okay. Everybody get ready. Dan's, chance, sir, thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member questions? Thank you. Sign in, proceed. So what do we say, August 13th for this one?
Good afternoon, Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell PC for the applicant.
Before you go, I, I need to add something that I missed at yesterday's review session. On Friday, we received 34 letters of opposition from neighbors citing safety, noise, parking, pollution, oversaturation of this particular use, the track record of the ownership group and intended man, and their intended management of the site. So, um, the applicant must respond to all of those concerns, many of which are substantive and meritorious. So we need responses to all of those, okay?
Okay, sure. Thank you. And, um, Chair, we were, had a representative executive session yesterday, so we're familiar with the board's comments. And I believe that they basically fall into one of four categories. The first is with regards to the character of the building, architectural concerns. As the chair and the commissioners are aware, since the last hearing, the applicant pursuant to direction from the board reduced the size of the building by one story. We're, um, happy to change the floor plate in that regard. We believe that it offers a less imposing building and the massing now has shifted more so that it's away from, uh, from Cypress, which I think is, it works out well as far as the street scape is concerned. Um, the, uh, but I know that the board did have comments with regards to that and so, uh, the architect can comment on that as well as other comments on the plans. Secondly, I understand that there are, um, there is still discussion with regards to existing finances on the property as well as the disposition of the HUD grant and, uh, and other considerations and the applicant is prepared to discuss that as well. The final two issues are more procedurally related. The first was a conversation with regards to the use of these, both the special permit and variance sections on the application. And the, the impact of the juxtaposition of those two sections. I'm, I'm not, uh, I know, I'm not sure whether or not the chair, now, just by way of background, the application began at BSA as a variance application, so we were instructed that it may be more beneficial to bring some of the application to the extent that relief was available through the special permit through that because obviously the burden of proof on a special permit is lower. So we managed to, um, to utilize a special permit section for everything except for FAR density, which are not permitted to be waived pursuant to the special permit.
Right.
And so, um, we, so now there's interplay of those two sections and we feel that they're sufficiently interrelated that one can exist here without the other. To the extent that the, um, the special permit speaks to, uh, the ability to proceed with the development on the site, the hardship on the site, et cetera. We need the bulk from the variance in order to establish the, the building that has been requested. I don't know, I don't know if there's any resolution as far as the board is concerned.
No, not yet. So that's, that's part of it. So we're not done with what the design is gonna be.
Okay.
So, and, but so to the extent that a floor area waiver is needed in order to allow for the height, then I, I'm not really sure that a height waiver under special permit works, right? So sometimes there are standalone things, let's say like the parking is a standalone, right? That kind of thing. I'm just not sure how this goes.
Okay.
So that's why I'm kinda leaving it open and then we can distribute it as we think it might get distributed when we know more about the full project.
Uh, and we're, and we're happy to, um, to revise the applicant, revise, we're happy to revise the application as necessary to do that. Obviously, prior iterations were in the form of a variance. We feel confident that we meet the necessary findings, but again, administratively, to the extent that one form of application is, is more convenient or easier to approve to the board, we're happy to make those changes. I think that there's a, one secondary issue, what I, which I would address prior to, um, calling up the project architect, which would be that there's some discussion with regards to on the unopened portion of 59th Street. As the chair is likely aware, we've had prior conversations with Corporation Council with regards to 59th Street. We've also testified that requiring the applicant here to purchase it would be financially ruinous for the project and that the applicant is unable to devote the additional budgetary requirements to, to, to purchasing that. I understand there may have been, uh, conversations which the chair and the commissioners may have had separately with Corporation Council in this regard and we'd be happy to, to hear those.
So, so we're having ongoing conversations with city planning because the terms of the grant, of the demapping back then was not ownership of the property, right? Was city would retain ownership. So we're continuing to inquire about that, okay?
Uh, if you could give me one moment.
Please. Man, Diane Adi, I'd just like to mention, and I'm not sure if you've also heard this from the law department, that with our conversations with them, who would be the next step to carry out the demapping application would be to go to the law department to draft the mapping agreement. Um, we spoke with council there and she felt.
Where?
At the law department.
Right.
Uh, she felt that because that sentence that you're referring to about city maintaining ownership was in the background paragraph and didn't appear in the resolved paragraphs later on, that that, well, that is, that is what we were told.
So, I, I don't want to actually continue this conversation. We're, we're working with city planning to see whether there, I, I, my goal is to not actively work on talking us out of this, right? The idea is to try to talk us into a solution that existed back in 2003, or wherever that year was, for the HUD project. And so I don't want to have this ongoing where you're, you're second guessing what they said and what they think and all of that. Instead, that's between city planning and, and ultimate, that's city planning's decision and to the extent that they can direct law department, those two agencies, right? So I would rather not have on the record a debate about what somebody else said, right? Thirty, third party, fourth party information and, and we're continuing to look at this, okay? Okay?
Thank you, Chair. So, um, and, um, I was not privy to the conversation with the law department, Ms. Adi was, which is why I just wanted her to speak today. So I think at this time, uh, if appropriate, I would have the project architect come and just discuss some of the changes made to the building and whether or not there's any additional changes which are requested by the board.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Um, Alan Muknam with Urban Architectural Initiatives. Um, as Rich mentioned, we received your notes of your review meeting yesterday and we went ahead overnight and, um, made some changes in regards to the driveway to hopefully, um, satisfy the board, so if they just pass this.
This was emailed. Was submitted, right? Wasn't submitted yet?
You guys could.
I don't need to, but the project manager.
If you guys just turn to page P3, you think you see that we, uh, addressed the board's concerns with regards to privacy to their decent lot and we provided a two-foot planting strip, uh, to evergreen hedgings and we, uh, we tried to whatever we can to address your concerns.
So.
And we made it a one-way driveway in and out of Cypress.
The one-way driveway is appreciated, but I'm just gonna cut straight to the chase. If you read the 34 letters of opposition from the neighbors, they're extremely upset about this project, right? And one of the things that, um, they're upset about the scale of the building, they're upset about the number of units, they're upset about the people who are going to be staying in there and the interaction with children and all of that. And then that, I'm putting that in one pile of considerations. The next, and all this goes to architecture and urbanism, right? The next pile of considerations is that, um, the building is still 10 feet taller than is allowed as of right, right? Um, so coming down by one story really didn't make the building small relative, or let's say in keeping with the neighborhood character. And the neighborhood character studies, which you, the architect may or may not have been involved in, they're not very, let's say enthusiastic. So it seems to me they were just done by the environmental consultant, which basically said, well, this building at least is better than a vacant lot strewn with trash. Okay, I'll give you that, right? But that's not an urban character argument, right? So the building is tall for the neighborhood and another argument was that it's, it's similar in height to other community facilities, but this is a residential building. So that, that comparison is really not appropriate. But one of the things that, um, that, and this is really why I want to talk to you about this, one of the things that's very evident when you look at, you know, an aerial view of the site, you see that the block is kind of like this island surrounded by green, right? And so it seems to me that you might be able to make an argument that you're putting in almost like a, the closest equivalent you can think of, which is not a really, well, it is, like a tower in the park. So, or a tower in the park or an office park, that kind of thing. But the word park is what's operative, right? A park surrounds a tall building in greenery and what you're doing is surrounding the tall building in nothing, right? So a little four-foot or whatever that is, three-foot strip of grass. So.
But those do provide just price.
No, but it, but I'm not just talking about the scar, the cars, I'm talking about the scale of the building. So what I look at when I see that driveway, I see the driveway as an opportunity for a great buffer zone between the residents who are very nervous about this project. And I see, um, the parking kind of pushed to the edge of this large plate building instead of pushed underneath. And I'm not suggesting that you dig. I'm just saying, some, right now, you've got the building on PLO-T, but only for a part of it. So if more of the parking were pushed under into the PLO-T, then you would be able to create the sort of green zone around the building and maybe the urbanism argument is that now it's like a mini tower in the park or, or something like that, right? And so, um, what's happening is right now, there's actually a shortage of the required amount of landscaping according to the zoning, which is the opposite from what there should be given sort of the aggressiveness of this building relative to this low-scale community. So that's why I wanted to look at another approach at grade, right? And so not a little three, three-foot strip where they mow the lawn with a very skinny lawnmower, right?
But we could always get another waiver for five more parking spots and we could just.
Well, so, and that's another thing which the demand studies will have to deal with because, and I don't remember what they're doing cause it's been a while since I looked at the demand studies, that the neighbors are also very nervous about parking and hence the subject of the shuttle bus cause you're really far away from even the nearest bus stop, which is very unusual, right, to be so far even from a bus stop.
If I may address some of your concerns.
Yes.
Just one thing I wanted to point out is on Cypress Avenue, we actually have a fine expansive plan. So the, uh, building is experienced from the street and by the neighborhood. We do have a plenty of planting area right next to the left of the site.
Just on that one little spot. I'm talking about the houses that are accessed on 59th Street.
Right, well, and, well, the far end too, I mean, we could do, and we have a great landscape architect that we hire for these projects.
No, so you didn't hear me. Or you did hear me, but you're not addressing what I just said.
Can I get to the other part too? Cause we took a look at how we could bring the parking underneath the building and we wouldn't be able to do that without losing the program and units on the first floor.
Right, I, I understand that, which is one reason why, you may not have heard the whole here, comment period, one reason why I was asking about funding structure because the five units that are on the first floor, not ideal units on first floor, and that maybe that's a way of then slipping more of the parking underneath the building. Or in any event, changing somehow or other the layout of this so that it's not all about a driveway adjacent to residents and does something urbanistically to mitigate its height, right, in this very low-scale neighborhood, right? And it's also, you know, it's not just high to the low-scale residents, it's really high relative to the cemetery, right? So all of those before and after studies that were done in the shadow analysis, it's kind of like, oh, there it is, right? So how do you, as an architect, try to, um, respond to those urbanism problems, right? And not just have this thing there that you know is yours and it has a big, your name all over it.
We've definitely, we're not that kind of architect.
Right.
Support, supportive and affordable housing and our goal is to provide the maximum amount of units, you know, as, as very well needed. Uh, we did get that comment yesterday and we did discuss it with the client on the, uh, well, I could do this a little bit more, but they do find the units on the ground floor valuable for more.
Right, so then this is the part where.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna say it like this. So I always go like this. I'm the client and I tell you, that's what I want.
Right.
And now you, the architect, figure out how to accomplish it, right? So here I am, I'm being the client and I'm saying, you have a problem urbanistically with this very large building that has a lot of opposition from very nervous neighbors. You need to do something to show that you're, um, cognizant and appreciative of the neighbors' concerns and not just sort of force this project down them, down into their neighborhood without showing that you care, right? So now I, client, am telling you, architect, show we care, do something to make this building fit within the neighborhood and if it means the loss of some units or it means the reduction in size of some of the units, whatever, to accomplish this, that's how you, you compromise when you do architecture, right?
Absolutely, that's, and we also have to pay a man.
Can I, can I just step in here? I, I think we have to be mindful of the fact that this is an affordable housing project. So unlike it being a market rate where one could increase the market value of the unit to recoup for the loss of the units to make it contextual, it's a very different argument here. Here, it's completely driven by the funding sources and if the funding sources seems to indicate that you need some minimal number of units to make it even financially viable, then, um, loss of unit, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, they have made the argument that the, the loss of you, 66 is like the cutoff point. Anything less than that does not enable, and also there are programmatic requirements. So just converting everything into a studio is also not going to be something that the, that the agencies that are funding it is going to support it. They want a mix of housing and other things.
So this is HPD's call, so we have reached out to HPD to determine whether or not the unit mix that they're, request they're proposing, whether the unit count that they're proposing, whether the pro forma that they draw up are, are accurate or the way that HPD looks at it. And they also, they have to look, HPD is also gonna look at the layouts of the building, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm. So I'm not going to speak on HPD's behalf, but we have multiple findings to make. So it's not just programmatic needs, it's also neighborhood character. And when you have that much community opposition, we can ignore the community because that's not right.
Chair, I just want to, I need to just interject as far as the record is concerned. And this matter was heard by Community Board Five, no fewer than four times, three in actual hearings, two with the Land Use Committee, one with the full board, and then one where the full board, where the Land Use Committee's vote was approved. And so, in duly notified meetings and hearings, and this was approved at a six-story building with this, you know, with 66 units. I understand that there have been letters that have been introduced to the record since then, more recently, but the truth of the matter is, I just wanted to weigh in on the fact that in our satisfaction of many different viewpoints in the community, we do have a very strong indication, near unanimous, from this community board, which is in favor of this building, at a taller, bigger building.
So just to be clear, for the record, because you made a statement, the members of the community that, who submitted all of those letters and came here the last time to testify, said that they were not notified of the community board meetings. And that's very common, as you know, with community boards where they don't post in the neighborhood, they don't notify the neighbors who are immediately affected. I don't actually know how a lot of these community boards notify. And so the people who came to testify said they weren't asked and they had no opportunity to comment. So the immediate neighbors are the ones who are going to be affected by this. And for me, the idea of ignoring the fair requests of immediate neighbors is not reasonable.
Nor would we ask for ignoring those requests, but I would just, I will just discuss this subsequently with the community board, because I know that, you know, this is, Community Board Five is a very thorough community board. And so, and I'd like for them to know that we've reduced the size of the building to within 10 feet of what's permitted as of right. And so, again, I believe that there's architectural treatment which can take place, which will somewhat mitigate some of the effects that we're talking about, but I just didn't want to set us back to step one when we've already come down this road.
Well, it's not setting you back to step one, because the building, this is an iterative process, as you know, and so the building continues to take form, right? We've only had one hearing on this and that hearing resulted in some reduction in the mass of the building, but we need, we did never receive a neighborhood character argument other than it'll be a lot better than the vacant lot with all the rats, right? So that's not exactly a neighborhood character argument, right?
Well, also, the prior, you know, existing building was an eyesore, but I think that...
No, but that's what I mean. You can't say, "Oh, we're replacing an eyesore and therefore this is a perfect solution," right?
I think maybe it might be beneficial to talk about the program right now, because this is somewhat interconnected with the number of units that's being requested.
No, but so, we understand that the ideal unit count is the 66 units. We understand that there have been financials that were submitted to support that, which HPD is looking at along with Commissioner Hartley-Brown, right? So it's not to say that we don't understand that, but there are other, there are forces that work from all different sides. And sometimes, you know, that's how architecture works.
But some of the considerations from the financing side are that, to the extent that we understand it's an iterative process, but to the extent the process goes too long, we'll lose the project. And so I think maybe we'd like to kind of voice...
We're not there. No, okay. We are not there. You already told us what your funding deadline was, so it's not July, for example. So if it's an iterative process, we still have, we still have other things that need to be cleared up, so...
Can we have testimony on the record with regards to the funding requirements?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Carrie Curtis from CSD Housing. I did want to walk through the process, what we've been doing with HPD, and also give an update on how the flow will work from a financial standpoint. There are two different tax credit programs that are available for affordable and supportive housing, 4% versus 9%. In the 4% tax credits, these are as of right, it's a rolling application process, and in those situations, about a third of the project cost is covered by equity from investment groups. In the 9% tax credits, approximately 60 to 70% of the project cost is covered by investor equity. And for these smaller projects in the supportive and affordable space, it's very, very difficult to make a 4% tax credit project work. So I want to make sure that the BSA is aware, we did consider all options and feel that the 9% tax credits are the only viable solution for this project. And that puts us into, 9% are obviously a competitive process and the application occurs one time per year. In this case, the request for proposal has not been initiated from HPD at this time, but we have had quite a bit of interaction with them and understand that the 9% RFP will be coming out with the expectation of an application in late August. We've been working extensively with the Supportive Housing Group at HPD, and we did begin conversations with them approximately a year and a half ago with the idea of being in the pipeline for an August 2019 application. I do want to point out, for us to get our recommendation letter from the Supportive Housing Group, we have to submit our application materials, which are pretty extensive, and those must be, from as of last night, the conversation we had, the expectation is we would get those materials in by the middle of July of this year. And I do want to point out, a few of these items have very long lead times. So specifically, we do need to make a submission to DOB of our construction documents and also perform the City Environmental Quality Review or Seeker process, needs to be completed with submission to HPD by mid-July, is what we understand the timing.
We're the lead agency, so we handle the seeker review. So it's not an H, we're lead, right?
No, I have a question. Do you need a separate HPD review for the 9% tax credit?
That is our understanding, that we do need a separate.
Why would you need a separate if you've got a lead agency? You'd only need like a tech memo if there's open questions. That doesn't really make sense. You don't do double seeker review.
Yeah, you can probably integrate the review for the 9% tax credit as part of this. Do confirm that with HPD Environmental Department.
Okay.
Okay.
So as far as I remember from my days back in HPD, I think the requirement was that you have to submit an application project that is ready to go. So you have to have all the necessary approvals from all the necessary agencies, including DOB?
DOB, yes. We have to have made the submission, not the approval.
Submission to DOB, right. So it means your construction documents have to have been submitted by when?
We have been given an ideal timeline of mid-July, is what we were given last name.
To give it to DOB?
To stay in, to stay in this cycle of the 9%.
You're not anywhere near construction documents finished in mid-July, so I don't understand this timeline.
To stay in this year's cycle, that's what we've gotten from HPD.
We're in, what is this, June 11th?
11th, yes.
That's a set of construction documents for a whole building by mid-July on a building that's not designed yet? Yeah, you know...
We have started drafting, Alan Bogdan, I'm sorry. We have started drafting it and we're planning on submitting it by mid-July or Thursday of 10th of July.
So this is making me very uncomfortable. I'm very uncomfortable because you're making an assumption about a building that hasn't been approved by this agency, right? Plus, don't we have environmental review? What's our status on environmental review? Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah, it's finished. Because there wasn't that many technical areas, so they got their sign off and they submitted final EAF.
Again, this is the guidance we've been given from HPD to stay in this.
I understand that, but HP, so we're having a meeting, I think it's tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning.
With HPD. So to clarify all of this, because I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that we're being forced and I'm not, I'm not okay with being, with our application being rushed, shoehorned, whatever, and us unable to make the findings. So right now, we don't know that the 66 units is the minimum variance, because HPD has to review those materials, which we only received recently, right? So, yeah.
You're adding to this building two additional floors, right?
No, it's a new construction.
Are they going to knock down the existing one?
No, 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 it's a complete tear down.
No, no, there's an existing building on site which was being demolished. Yeah.
And it's going to be, that building's three-story, it's going to be, what he's saying is this is going to be two stories larger than the current building.
Than the current building and a much larger floor plate. Yeah, it's a completely different thing than what we see on this.
It's higher and pretty much most of it.
And that one only had, I don't know, 14 units or something? This is 16 units, 66 units.
Just very quickly, two other points I'd like to make. Obviously, there are a number of term sheets out there that we do need to adhere to as a part of our financials that we put together. So we did stay in compliance with the HPD term sheets. The QUAP as well provides a number of guidelines. And again, we have worked extensively with HPD in the development of the pro forma financials and again, adhered to those standards along the way. I also just wanted to...
Sorry, what are the term sheets?
So the Supportive Housing Loan Program provides very specific terms that we need to comply with as a part of our pro formas for the 9% application.
And that's the application that you have submitted to demonstrate the various cutoffs?
Yes.
And have you submitted those pro formas to Supportive Housing?
Yes, we've been discussing those pro formas for at least nine to 12 months with HPD, so they are familiar.
And what's in the pro formas? Is that the, the financials that you gave us?
Yes, that's the exact term sheet.
Let her answer the question.
Yes, yes, they are. So again, they're in the HPD format and adhere to the term sheets as provided by HPD. The other point I just wanted to make was the land acquisition cost does represent amounts paid by Wellife to remove the HUD lien on the property. So all of those amounts are, have been funded by Wellife previously and do not represent, you know, any kind of windfall or anything along those lines.
No, 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 that's not the question. My question, which is an HPD question, is whether when they look at pro formas, whether they include in the pro forma the cost of the site, if the site is already owned by the not-for-profit, the developer? And if they're looking at the actual purchase price, or if they look at market value, which is a different thing, you know, we have for-profit applications, right?
I believe they would consider the purchase price and obviously there needs to be an appraisal that supports the fair value. So if you pay more than the fair value, that, I understand that to not be included within the pro forma.
So when they look at fair value though, that's the appraised value at the time of purchase?
At the time the project is awarded.
But if the purchase took place, when, the purchase took place in 2003, right?
No, I believe the payment was in 2016 or 2017. It was very recent. The payment was made to HUD to remove the lien from the property.
Right, but HUD's lien was based on their acquisition of the property on behalf of this entity, right? So HUD purchased the property at 2003 value. So the takeout by Wellife would have been the 2003 value. So wouldn't the purchase price analysis be based on the 2003 takeout?
Sherry Tucker from Wellife would be better to answer that.
Hi, Sherry Tucker. I'm the CEO of Wellife. Thank you for hearing our case today. What happened was there was some additional costs that were owed to HUD because of the activity that had occurred on the property. In order for us to basically reacquire the property, we had to pay the 2.169 million to HUD.
But the two point, so I, this part I understand, but some of that was because there was a building built on the site that was abandoned. So my question is, for one, why would HPD include those costs, which is not a land sale? That's just basically paying HPD back for wasted construction, some of it, right?
There was, it was a complex situation and there was, yes, the cost of construction of that building up to that point. This was discussed with HPD and they agreed that the costs that were incurred that had to be paid to HUD in order to make the property available for development would be considered as property cost for that site.
Okay, all right.
We specifically addressed it with them and they agreed that that would be a reimbursable cost in getting this...
HUD, HUD, or HPD said it would be a reimbursable cost?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Were there any other financial items which the chair wanted to talk about?
Now, and some of it will pick up tomorrow when we speak to HPD.
Okay. I know that there's individuals who want to speak. I would just, again, note to the chair that, you know, we understand the comments which have come in. We just wanted to note that in good faith of the 34 letters mentioned by the chair, that those have all been received within the last two weeks, with most of them coming in since June 4.
No, actually, there were a lot of people who came and gave testimony at the last hearing.
I'm not sure what that, what the relevance of that would be.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at the 34 letters and note that most of them came in since June 3. So, you know, while, which was after our submission. So I just, you know...
Again, I don't see, I don't see the relevance.
I'm just merely a statement with regards to our responsiveness, because I don't know...
Oh, I understand.
Oh, okay. You need to respond to their issues. But there are a lot of these issues affect, all of them, were raised at the here, the last hearing, because we had testimony from, I don't remember how many people, like five people, maybe, more? So same, same issues were raised in more detail in writing.
And I'm looking forward to your response to it when, and you should have the time to respond to it.
Understood.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, I would have to say though, that in, since you're talking about trying to speed up the review of a project and you're hearing concerns about the project, the fastest way to clear up a project is to respond to the concerns really, really efficiently and not come back and say, "We can't," right? Because we can't means, yes, you can. And a little three-foot grass strip is not really responsive, no offense to the architect, I understand you have a client. But, right, so I tried to make the concerns as clear as possible and, you know, if you were to turn it around in two days, responding fully to those concerns, you'd be done. But it's responding slowly to the concerns drags us on. So if you're as committed to your funding schedule as you say you are, be responsive, all right? Are there any speakers on this? Yes.
You can come, you can come to the...
No, you can sign in, but we thought maybe you want to speak first and then it's on. I think it's a...
Please state your name for the record.
Judy Cancel Delirium. I was here for the hearing last time and I'm glad you spoke about our concerns and the responsiveness. Quite honestly, we were waiting to see the submissions before we could respond, because we wanted to see if our concerns were addressed. I wasn't happy with the lift gate drive-through. I was happy to hear there was a difference here, but you mentioned some words that were of concern for all of us, aggressive in size and scale, in the amount of units. You know, the building, the current building is considered an eyesore, but it's an eyesore because it's abandoned and has graffiti on it. If it was a building intact and in good condition, it wouldn't be an eyesore. It's just an eyesore now because of its conditions. So the other thing is that the community wasn't informed. There was a meeting in November of which, of which we were not informed by the community board. It was addressed then. Assemblyman Mike Miller even opposed it. He had a statement read at that meeting opposing the unit, the building, because there is another unit on that street, which I mentioned the last time I was here, that provides services. So that was opposed. It was, it was stated that it was going to be addressed at the next meeting. All the minutes to our community board meetings following those, it was not addressed. It's not in the minutes. So the community is still not being informed. This is new to me. I've never had to do this before. I'm not happy that I have to do it, so, and I'm somebody who's trying to be informed. So there are many people in our community that don't even know how to go about getting the information. So it's not fair.
Please address us.
I'm sorry, it's not fair to us. The only reason I looked over there was because if they really wanted to work for us, they should really be concerned about our, our needs. Because had it, would it be in other people's communities, they'd want it to work for them as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any other speakers on this? Really do appreciate you... Really do appreciate you coming. Okay. Yep.
Hi, Sherry Tucker again, Well Life Network. Appreciate the comments that were just made. I received, I believe it was about 10 of the letters this past week, reviewed them, obviously, have a very empathetic understanding of this situation. Obviously, our agency provides services to many vulnerable populations. There is a need for these types of housing developments in this city. We know, it's discussed in the papers all the time, that there is no place for the individuals that we serve to live. So, with this development, we've worked very hard to try to be responsive and our agency works very hard to make sure that we're good neighbors in whatever neighborhood that we have our housing. We've, we've made extreme efforts recently, over this last year, I recently became the CEO and I've made it a mission of mine to make sure that all of our locations are locations that are beautiful, that we're good neighbors, that we assist the neighborhood whenever we can to try to make sure that they are comfortable with us being a neighbor. The individuals that are being served, I know there was a lot of comments about trash, about parking, about mentally ill people being in the neighborhood and interfering with children and, and those types of concerns. And I understand it's, it's a scary thing when you're not clear on what happens in these types of developments. We, as an agency, spoke to these specifically at the community board meetings. I was present at the meeting where the letter was read from the representative, Miller, and that in the response to that, there was, you know, many examples given of the neighborhoods that we have these types of facilities in. And we have one specifically in Nassau County in Island Park where there was a very large outcry from the neighborhood that the community was so concerned about this particular development going in, it's of similar size. We are now a favored neighbor of that neighborhood. They've actually asked us to try to take out a hotel building across the street that's kind of a nuisance to the neighborhood to put in another facility because they see the benefit of having a community there of individuals who are being cared for and monitored as opposed to individuals who may have mental health issues that are not cared for or monitored. Unfortunately, what we're seeing in our world today, unfortunately, we see many people with mental health issues that are not being addressed appropriately and there's really no way to control that in any of our neighborhoods. What we as an agency do, it is our mission to enable the individuals that we serve to achieve their highest and best potential. And the way that we do that is provide them with the appropriate support services and wraparound services to assure that they don't decompensate and that they become a danger to communities. That's when you have concerns, when you have individuals who are not being cared for appropriately, who are not in these types of programs, they are the ones that can become a very dangerous situation in a neighborhood. So, we absolutely understand the dynamics of what this means to a neighborhood. We want to make this building very pleasing to the neighborhood. I, I hear what you're saying in terms of adding, you know, as much buffer as we can. We thought that we were addressing that, that the strip that was put in there is pictured as seeing a privacy hedge, not just a grassy strip, that there would be a privacy hedge there, that we will, you know, put in as much, I'm very much a flower lover, as many flowering bushes and shrubbery as, as we can possibly put in there to make this a very beautiful site.
It's two feet wide. Are you, are you a gardener?
Yes.
Two feet wide, do you have any gardener-
There are some very narrow shrubs that you can put in.
Right, so let's just put it that way. It's a two-foot wide non- buffer, two feet wide isn't enough for anything to grow other than like petunias. So, so, you know, I just want to, I need a reality spin on what those things are.
Well, we do have, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. I am a gardener. We do have many, many homes, as I said, and we have many that have very narrow side yards that we do put these privacy shrubs.
Okay, so I want to stop you on this two-foot wide discussion. The architect, you all heard what I said about the buffer?
Yes.
It needs to be significant. It can't be just a lip service to buffer. And we deal with a lot of issues where we need to have buffers between uses. And so, you know, 20-foot, 15, 20-foot buffer zones are a standard for when we're trying to really create something of substance. So, keep, keep that in mind when you talk about this. But what I do want to ask you is, one of the questions, one of the many repeated questions that we saw in the comments from the neighbors was, your, the floor plans only show one office and one community room, right?
Two community rooms.
And the, yeah, no, so, one office and one community room. And one of the questions was, if indeed you're providing supportive services, where is it provided? Because it doesn't seem like for 66 units, that's much, right? So, and you don't necessarily, well, you kind of, for the benefit of one of the members of the public who's here, maybe you should, but I'd say that what's missing is a very clear response in writing about not, because I did see your submission has, these are the staff people that we're going to have. But it's not clear, okay, how long do they stay? What do they do? How do they actually work to support the residents? Not all the residents necessarily need support either because it's kind of a mix of populations, right? And so, you, you need to be very, very specific in your submission to respond to those concerns that in fact, there doesn't seem to be, the concern is that there doesn't seem to be enough room to put those people who are support in the building. And it seems as if they leave at the end of the day and then, then that, so, and it may not be the case, but there's no reason why any reader of the materials would know otherwise because we weren't given that information, right?
Okay, I apologize. I believe that we did write up the information about this. It is 24/7 coverage, that we do have individuals that will be in the building at all times. This will have a live-in super that's there to address, you know, any kind of building issues that are of concern.
I think the major concern was they were, forgive me for interrupting, but I believe one of the major concerns from the community was that there would be only one caseworker during the night shift for all 66 families. Is that still the case?
So, let me just explain about the population and yes, that is the case. We have a number of facilities and we use a similar staffing model for the, those facilities. These are individuals who are at the most independent living in our spectrum of care. We have, you know, coming right out of the psychiatric center type facilities where we have 24/7 coverage, multiple staff on, on, you know, 24/7. We have the apartment living scattered site throughout the city. And then, we have what's called our supported housing in these types of developments. These are individuals who very, are very independent. They, many of them have jobs, they live just as every one of us do. They just need some support for some mental health issues that they've experienced through their journey. And those types of individuals are not ones that you're having to have interactions with on a daily basis. It is not the type of program this is. This is a program where you have case managers, you have what's called care coordinators, you have, another program we have is community service wraparound where they're visiting, they're dropping into the individuals, meeting with them on a monthly or if there's need for more frequent basis, more frequent basis, to, to make sure that they're staying well. These are individuals who basically have achieved, as I said, a high level of independence and they're not requiring daily group sessions or, you know, that type of thing. This is not a clinic. It is a living facility. This is a home. This is where people come, just like any of us, to a place, if you're living in an apartment building, and your home. It's not expected to be a clinical type facility. These are individuals who don't need that level of service. We would not put individuals in this facility that are of a nature that would require that type of interaction.
And this is all, and this is not a facility that anybody can walk in and seek services. It's only those who are living here-
It's a, it's an apartment building essentially. Would you like to comment?
Hi, Crystal John. Okay, so I just wanted to-
Can you state your position or?
Crystal John, the Vice President of Behavioral Health Services at Well Life. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more of what Sherry Tucker was talking about as far as the staffing pattern. So, actually, we're going to have two per shift, two staff.
Two per shift.
Sometimes it may even be three during the day, but at nighttime, we find that we need security at the front desk, the front desk person to sign in and sign out if anyone's coming in and out of the building.
Can you-
And we also have another person on site.
Just a quick question.
It'll be at least two, yes.
So, you say two or three, what are the roles of, of these two or three people on site?
Okay, at night, we're going to have like the rec staff, which is considered almost security.
Okay.
The security of the building, the signing and the sign-out. During the day, we're going to have case managers and we're going to have a program manager. So, the case manager is going to be more involved in the, the care and advocate for the individual, maybe escort them on some visits, doing collaterals with their-
Is this something that's planned through, like planned in advance or are they there for it?
This is planned, this is a set schedule that everyone's going to be aware of, including the tenants of that building, they're going to be aware of this schedule. They're also going to have numbers that they can call 24 hours coverage, meaning if it's an emergency in the middle of the night and they need to get in touch with someone higher, say their program manager, they will have that number.
Okay.
And the staff is going to call 24 hours, seven days a week.
Sorry, sorry, what's a collateral, whatever you just said?
Say if they want to reach out to their medical doctor or someone to their clinical, their clinical services, their psychiatrist or their social worker. The case manager, that's the role of the case manager, to reach out. The direct staff is basically working with the individual, but at the same time, securing the building at night, making sure whoever comes in and out of the building, sign in, sign out. Also, we're going to do groups-
Before, let me get there. So, the, during the day, I just want to, during the day, there's going to be two or three caseworkers, case managers?
Yes.
And will there also be a direct staff that's doing security at the door or is that only happen at night?
No, it's going to be somebody at the door 24 hours, seven days a week.
That's distinct from the two case managers.
Yes.
And then, at the evening, it's only going to be the person working the door?
Right, at the door because they're sleeping, so, you know, service is being done. So, it's really just mainly security of the building, just to make sure if there's an emergency, that person is there to adhere to that emergency or the security of the building.
And the case managers are going to be, I'm sorry again, I'm just trying to get it down. And the case managers are going to be, have a service schedule each day and that's what they're going, that's going to be their routine?
That's going to be their routine.
Okay.
Right. And we also want to have peer counselors. We're going to have two, I believe it's two peer counselors. And peers are individual with a mental health condition, also working in that capacity, working with the tenant with the service of that building.
Do the peer counselors live at the location?
No, peer counselors do not live at the location. The peer counselors come in and they give them that individual direct assistance, escorting them to appointments maybe if they need it, running groups, engaging them in whatever area they need engagement in.
And where would the peer counselors stay while they're, do they have a shift, like a nine to five or?
Right, they'll be on this, they'll be incorporated in the schedule, the schedule.
Okay.
And we're going to have offices in this building. We also want to have a community room where we can engage them in any type of service as far as maybe groups or individual, but it's, it's not a counseling, it's not considered a clinical building where we're going to counsel or, you know, this is where they go outside. We will connect them to services outside, but we are not, we're not doing social work. We're not doing counseling in the building.
So, so the little office that's being provided, which is 400 square feet, which is a pretty little office, that's to handle the four people who are going to be there during the day? Is that the idea?
It's also, yes, two community rooms there too and-
No, no, but a community, I, I'm looking at the plans. I'm asking about what I'm seeing. So, the community room isn't an office, it's different, right? It's where the group things go on, right? If you're going to speak, you need to come up and speak.
Alan Bogdem again. Now, in that 400 square feet, we get about three private offices.
Okay, so it's three private offices, but I heard two to three program case managers during the day plus two peer counselors. So, where does everybody go?
So, the peer counselors are going to be on the working shift. So, they may not necessarily be there at the same time.
But they might be there at the same time.
Um, no, they won't, they will not be there at the same time. It will be two, but they won't at the same time in the other space.
No, 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 I, but I just, so that's two to three program case managers, that's three, who fit in that office because the office fits three. And then, there's a peer counselor who comes. Where does the peer counselor go?
We have-
Because there's only a room for three.
Sure.
Sherry Tucker, Well Life. What happens in these facilities? We have a very similar sized facility in the Bronx. It's a 58-bed facility apartment building and we have a exact setup of this. What happens is those peer counselors don't, they don't have a private office at that building. They're coming in, they're bringing their information with them. They're, we have administrative facilities where they, you know, have their office, if you want to say. It's not like they're coming there to spend their time in an office, they're coming there to interact with the individuals that they're coming to see.
But how, do they go up to the apartment and ring the doorbell?
Yeah, or they'll meet them in the community room or they'll take them on an appointment. It's a very active, interactive type relationship. We also have an area where there's a little conference table. So, when we do have people that come at this facility, they, the administrative staff, they can, they can, you know, sit around that table because they're not permanently located there.
In the community room, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, well, in the administrative area.
But that's, no, I know, but you're saying the administrative area. I'm just looking at the 399 square foot office, that's room for three people, that has three people in it already. So, there isn't an additional administrative area, there's a community room. So, maybe, maybe you already know your program.
Alan Bogdem again. You know, we do a lot of these buildings and spaces of high value. So, really what, a lot of our clients, including Well Life and at their 165th Street building, which we designed for them, we create flex spaces. There are spaces that would be during the day used for community gatherings, birthdays, anniversaries, things like that we see and that during other times, it's, you know, it's flexible where the staff at the building could have a meeting or a counselor goes in and have a meeting. So, there's two community rooms for that reason. The cellar community room would-
There's one in the cellar. Okay. So, there's one in the cellar also?
There's a community room in the cellar as well. So, we, we create flexible spaces. They do not have the luxury to have, you know, so many offices and a community, so programs do overlap.
Okay, okay. So, one of the reasons we're asking all these questions is because there's nowhere in any of the materials, it's not your fault, that's really the lawyer's job. There's nowhere, anywhere in the materials that goes through this step-by-step that would have alleviated the fears in any way of the community, right? So, right, so, and I, and my other question is, if you're escorting people to appointments and so on, it's 11 blocks from the nearest bus?
Yes, Crystal John again. So, we're going to incorporate a shuttle. We're going to put a shuttle in place and the shuttle's going to pick up the individual from the site to the bus station or the train station. Okay, I believe it's the L train and the 36 bus.
Right.
Which is, yes, like you, like you stated, it's quite a distance. And the shuttle is going to run on peak hours and off-peak hours. And it's going to run on during the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM every half an hour and from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, half an hour, and in between, hourly. And we also, okay, hourly. And if that does not meet the individual's needs, then we're going to also explore, we'll utilize Cessaride and we have a lift, a corporate account that we can also utilize.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there other questions from the commissioners? Are there any other speakers? Sorry. You've already spoken, but you want to-
I do, is there a, is there- I do, is there a, is there, would the front security officer know if everyone? I guess my question is, would the security officer know if every, all the tenants are in, are in their rooms or not? Is that, is he keeping an accounting of who's in and who's not?
Yes, so what's gonna happen is the individual, when they leave the building, you're gonna sign out the book when you leave. And if someone's coming in the building, this is like a regular building, I guess with a doorman. And if the person, if you come in to visit one of the tenants, then the person at the front desk is gonna call that individual to see if the individual is, is up and to please come to and escort you.
But tenants themselves don't have to sign in and sign out?
When the tenants leave, they sign the book.
Oh, they do?
Mm-hmm. In our other facilities, that's what we have.
But this is just a general resonance of if one person wants to go stay at a friend's house, they stay at a friend's house, right? I mean, not restricting their movements, that they must come home by a curfew or something like that, right?
Not at all, no, not, no. They can go, they're free to go to and from.
Would they, okay, would they advise you if they're leaving? I'm just wondering what the value is of signing out if-
A lot of them do, yes. A lot of them, they will let us know that they're going away, or they're going to the store. And they're coming right back, and they'll sign the book, and they come back.
And if someone was not to, is there anything that would take place?
For our special needs, yes, it's diligent search. So if I, if we don't see an individual-
And this is in this, I'm talking about in this facility?
Yes. And if we don't, if we don't see an individual within 24 hours, then we have to report it. And this is a 24-hour diligent search. So we're gonna reach out to the nearest precinct, we're gonna reach out to the nearest hospital. We're gonna reach out to their clinical services, just to see what happened.
Okay, and I know this is, we talked about this before. But what would you say the percentage of special needs is to the remainder?
To the what?
Special needs to the rest of the population? And that's 60, special needs, 40%? Low income?
Low income, yeah.
Maybe it might be helpful, if you can give, as part of your programmatic discussion that you just laid out, one of the buildings that you operate in the Bronx, which you said is very similar in program. Use that as an example and kind of say, what are the programs that are provided there? And how the residents there function and the day-to-day, would that be helpful?
If it's the same?
If it's a similar, if it's the same thing. I think that might be helpful, if you can just kind of use that as an example of how you provide the service, how the, how your, the residents live there, and how the case management cooperate or work with or provide the necessary service for the residents. I think that would kind of address a lot of the questions you're hearing about the programs that you provide.
Right, because some of it is, I know you're still in the kind of figuring out what this is gonna be stage. If you have something that's essentially the same building, then you might give us more, and your neighbors, more confidence that this is something that you've established works.
Right.
Right, like you mentioned, that Long Island location, which is really a different, it sounds like it's a different kind of an activity, but-
We have similar models.
It's a similar model, so then-
Not the one in Long Island, we have a similar model in the Bronx, yes. We even offered, at the community meeting, we even offered, you know, tours, just to go and see the facility. If you wanna speak to the residents, if you wanna speak to any of the workers, we offered this in our meeting. And it's still, we can still have tours there, yeah.
Right.
And I think, I seem to recall, some of the supportive housing provide, they also provide security cameras in and around the site. I assume you're gonna provide that, include that in your statements? That you do provide security camera to monitor the activities in and around the property and in the lobby area and in the community room? Typically, those are the areas you provide the cameras.
Yes.
So please do include those.
Right, and I think to follow up on that, community concerns are about security in their neighborhood, right? So to the extent that you can explain how their neighbor, how they will feel safe, that, let's say strangers are wandering around the neighborhood. And to use the word stranger for me is a little, is a little difficult, because this, these become residents of the community, right? But I, I think that's something that's lost in the translation. Person moves into an apartment building, they become a resident of the community. So how do you persuade the commute, your neighbors that these, the people who live here will become part of the community in a positive way?
So even, even in our last community forum, when I was out, I was even suggesting that we become part of the community board. This is happening in a lot of other communities. Where, you know, we are, when you have your board meetings, I will be present. In whatever areas or whatever it needs to be addressed, I'll make sure that happens. We also, in Long Island, we created a hotline where the neighbors can call me directly, off-hours, 24 hours, seven days a week, if there's any concerns, they felt uncomfortable, they found the tenants roaming in the neighborhood. And I called the facility and I made sure my staff went out to them and found that person. And made sure whatever needed to be done.
So just add those into the program?
In the very beginning, in Long Island, quite a bit, quite a few calls.
But Long Island's serving a different, different type of client, okay?
It was quite a bit of calls. And then, then, like Ms. Tucker was explaining, they embraced us. We were literally one community. Like, in the beginning, it was, yes, a lot of uncertainties and concerns.
So because you raised that, you need to explain the difference between the Nassau facility and this one? Because it came up just now in the testimony, and I don't want it to, this kind, that kind of a facility to be confused with this one. So in your writing, please distinguish between that facility and this one? And even, yeah, like what kind of services you provide in those facilities, how many people, that kind of thing? Because here, there's not a lot of room for services, right? And arguably in that one, there's more room for services, I don't know, right? Okay. The reason that I'm saying that is because I can hear the community response saying, how do we know it's not gonna convert into one of the one like in Nassau County, right? So, so the answer is, no, actually-
It's not set up for it.
Whatever it is, it's being designed as an apartment building for people who are in a much more independent lifestyle. And if it were being a Nassau building, it would have a collective kitchen, whatever. I don't know the answers, right? But the response to that, okay?
Sherri Tucker again, just, that's exactly right. It's a, facility in Nassau is a different level of care. These are individuals that have a higher need of support services and more coverage. It does have a learning kitchen, it has, it's just a whole different setup. This building is not one that would ever be able to turn into that due to the regulations that go along with affordable housing and the tax credit equity program that we're utilizing to fund this building. It will always remain as this type of facility, as an apartment building, as a residential facility for individuals who live there. We had, the Bronx facility, as Crystal said, we've had many people come and tour that facility. It is a facility that has now been in service for three years, I believe. It is impeccable as far as the surroundings. The residents that live there are so proud of that facility. It is a facility that, in the, in the elevator, there's mirrors. You know, there was concern of those are gonna get broken like that, that not one has been touched. People are amazed that they have such a beautiful place to live. This is the standard of care everybody should expect in this country. To have a place, a nurturing, a nurturing, safe environment in order to achieve their highest potential. And that's what we're trying to provide. This is, we had a testimony from one of the residents at that facility. He came to an annual fundraising dinner that we had. He pulled the keys out of his pocket with tears in his eyes, saying he never, ever felt that he was going to be able to live in a place such as this, and it had changed his life. This is the kind of stories that we're gonna have at this facility. These are individuals who care about having a place to live and being able to finally get their life on track and to move forward. These aren't individuals that are gonna go roaming about, you know, in, in ways that are threatening. There may be an occasional circumstance that happens in, in every facility. Whether it's a supported housing, affordable facility, whether it's a straight-up apartment building in the middle of Manhattan. You're gonna have individuals that have challenges in life and have these circumstances arise. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands, this is a permanent place, home. It's not transitional, it's not that people are gonna be cycling through. Many people that go there will live there for years and years and years, and they will be part of that community. Crystal said, we're happy to be part of the community advisory councils. We're happy to, you know, join in in any community events. We want to be good neighbors. We want to provide this housing to the individuals that deserve it and need it.
I note that this was covered last time, but I just wanna state again, is this the institution that you believe is akin to this one that's going to be created? Is the one in, on Westchester, in Westchester Avenue?
No, the one in the Bronx.
East 165th in the Bronx.
I have 2510, what, Westchester Avenue, is that a separate location?
Is that something else?
Westchester Avenue, is that our Bedford facility? That's a, that's a facility, that's a clinical facility that we lease space to another agency and have administrative offices. But in the Bronx, or is that the ACT program? Is that in the Bronx, are you saying?
It is in the Bronx.
Yeah, that's where we have administrative buildings for some of our community outreach programs. So, but the facility itself is, I believe we provided pictures and write-ups about that. And I, I know that we have written all this, as you suggested, it's all been documented very much exactly as you described in the information that we provided. We talked about it at every single one of the community board meetings and, and really tried to reassure everyone of the type of facility that this would be.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, I do have a question for the architect. My understanding is-
Please state your name again for the-
Alan Mogadem.
My understanding is Cypress area is kind of an area with low groundwater table. And in addition to that, I see that you have plenty of space around the building. So for some, like extra cost, minor cost, I would say for excavation, you can add a subcellar to which you could push the parking and some of the, like, community rooms? Did you think about something like that?
Um, yes, and-
The excavation support cost would be like very minor?
They're not minor at all, they're not. We're doing a partial cellar just to bring the, you can see that even our cellar that we have right now, we have to cut back on space in the cellar just to be able to fit within the financial model. We would not be able to afford the additional excavation in a subcellar. I mean, you're talking about runs of ramps going continuously down. There's a lot of concrete work, there's a lot of supportive excavation work that goes in there. It's by no means a minor.
You're not gonna have significant support for excavation. You have open space around it.
Well, you're saying a subcellar. A subcellar is two floors, one floor below the cellar.
You already have one.
Right, so that means you're about, you're holding up 20-foot worth of earth to be able to put the foundation walls in. It, it is not a cheap undertaking, trust you me.
You did look at it.
What?
You did look at it.
No, we did not look at it, we did not look at it, because I know through years of experience that this is not something that we could even-
If you have a geotech and structure onboard, have them look at it. I believe that SOE cost would be minor, because you could do your excavation like this. You don't need as, probably with the exception to the street side, you don't need significant SOE.
It's restrictive, I could tell you, I mean, without looking at the numbers, without talking to, you know, we, we have the geotech order, we're ready to receive it, we expect the soil to be good, we expect that groundwater low enough, but-
Yes, that's what I'm saying, the soil in this area-
But you gotta look at where the building is, the building, the building runs right on 59th Street and on Cypress Avenue. That is not something we could cut back at a 45-degree angle, that's something you have to do shoring, shoring all the way down 20 feet. That is, that is exuberant cost.
Can you just explain, like, why didn't you complete, take the whole site plate as a subcellar?
We have to-
I mean, as a cellar, sorry.
As, as just a cellar, because we could not, we were trying to get to a cost that the building can be built.
So as you increased the floor plate of the cellar, it, there was some kind of financial-
Right, we have a-
Analytical method where you said, we need to make it smaller and smaller?
Right, I mean, we, we have a budget that we discussed with Well Life and CSD. And we kind of worked back into this budget, and we're saying this building costs X amount of, to build per square foot. Cellars usually cost about 100, 150 a square foot, less than the overall building. But we, you know, we, and we do this in all our other buildings. If we're over budget, we eliminate a portion of the cellar to meet the budget, and that's really what we're doing here. I mean, we're just only putting the program that's needed. I mean, they could have probably used more storage, they, you know, have room down there to expand, but the construction cost is currently not available to go further down. We always look to have parking in the cellar, and where we can, we always do. In this case, again, especially if you're going to a subcellar, you're talking about probably six feet of ramp to get you there for every story that you go down. So you're just building ramps and ramps and foundation walls and supporting that.
Okay, can you give information to Mr. Lobel so that they can write something up to this effect? So that there's a written response about why you can't build a full cellar or add a subcellar that would address the parking?
Sure.
Okay, so, so we have a concrete answer to that, okay?
Yeah, I see that, to the, to the western property line, they have like 30 feet from the building limits to the property line. 30 feet of these, if you slow 45 degree, like you said, you could probably build with open cut. No SOE at all, you could dig-
Alan Mogadem again, yes.
You could dig 30 feet below the-
That's one side?
Yes, on, on this side.
Right.
Again, on the other side, you could, you could probably do the same, right?
No, I mean, not if you're on the property line. If you're on the property line, you would need to get permission from the city to dig in their land. You have to get permission from DOT to be able to dig into the sidewalk on Cypress Avenue.
No, not to dig the sidewalk.
But you're not on the property line, you're back?
About 10 feet. They'll give you 10 feet of cutback, but then you have another 10 feet to go to a subcellar.
You know, I feel like it's doable, very doable, I would say, if you wanna take a look at it.
Sure, sure, we'll, we'll provide a response to Lobel's office.
Sorry, I just need to understand what it is you're suggesting that they do. You're talking about going down one more cellar?
Either going down or maybe enlarging the proposed cellar to include the parking.
And, and when you say an open cut, what's that mean?
Open cut means that, let's say you're digging 10 feet and you have adjacent buildings. You have to either underpin or put a excavation support system.
Right.
But if you're in desert and you wanna dig down 10 feet, you're just to slow the excavation. The only problem, the only problem that you could have is if you have high groundwater, so then you need to dewater. In this side, it, groundwater is anticipated to be like pretty deep. In addition, they have some sort of open site type, so they could probably dig most of the site without significant excavation support. That's, that's why I'm thinking about it.
Okay, so I think that the question is, then, if you were to do what's being suggested, what would the impact on the costs be? Would you do with using a standard, whatever, yeah, square footage cost? And, and this is to respond to the question about the parking waiver, which is being asked for? And why the, why the 19 spaces or whatever, the number of spaces that ultimately ends up being are the maximum that can be provided on-site, right?
I think this is a perfect segue, because one of the things I would like you to all kind of, and using the 168th Street as a model, to kind of indicate how the parking is going to be utilized here. That is, most of the tenants here probably don't even own cars. Most of, and most, those who will be coming, at most is the caseworkers who will be parking here. Rest of it is going to be not utilized by the tenant. So you probably, you should strengthen your argument for the parking waiver using some of the examples of cases that you have to justify. And that goes to my second point is, I think to dig into the subcellar for 19 spaces, even though they're seeking waivers or even a parking space, that's gonna remain vacant, because most of the tenants will not be able to own any cars. If the city, city is not gonna subsidize that. I know that from cases that I have worked on. City, I have worked on cases where we have asked applicants to take away subcellars. We have asked tenants to take away ramps. We have asked tenants to remove parking spaces, because we just did not want, the city did not want to subsidize those spaces. The need is just what that needs to be met. And, and studies and studies have shown that unfortunately, people, low-income population do not have auto ownership. And, and, and that is the reason why the zoning ZQA was implemented, where the parking was reduced. was reduced for low-income housing population, keeping that based on those studies. So I think there's ample evidence to show that parking request that is being made is based on very strong studies and analysis, and, and to dig a subcellar for 19 spaces, it's an extreme financial cost that the city has to bear.
So, so, so that's, but the whole point is, you need to make the findings, right? So you're asking for a waiver, there's many more parking spaces required than 19. I forget what the number is of required parking, right? So, so part of what we're trying to establish here is that the as-of-right number of spaces or closer to, or I don't remember what the demand studies say, cannot be met, right? What were the, I don't remember...
Required spaces is 28.
28, but then there was a demand study done for the parking study. I don't have my, I don't know where I have those notes, but so, do the 19 spaces meet demand, et cetera? That's a question, and I don't actually know if I have that note. So, yeah. So, so that's, that's the whole thing. Because normally, we ask for demand to be met on site. If demand is lower, and then that's something for you to speak to, too. You have these other sites, but they may be closer. This is very far away from any public transportation, right? And I, since this is a more independent population, the residents are more independent, are they people who might have cars? I mean, these are the kinds of things you would know from working on other projects, right? So...
Sheri Tucker, Well Life. Yes, our East 165th facility has three parking spaces.
But how far is it from a subway or the bus?
I don't know that. It's a couple blocks. So it's closer, but you're correct in the fact that we anticipate that the 19 spaces that we have, maybe half will be used. It's really not the type of facility that would, the residents would have, as you indicated, the means to have their own individual automobile to be utilizing the spaces. It will mainly just be the staff that come there, and many of those staff do take public transportation, the majority of our staff do that, that are in the city. Even, you know, I believe it was a nine-minute walk for the, for the transportation that is in this area. So I know that many of our staff would be making that walk, you know, regularly. But yes, we don't anticipate that those spaces would be utilized, and I think you gave a very eloquent argument to the, the challenges that we face. Being in the nonprofit arena, we do not have any type of margin to be able to put in extra cost in these facilities. We have to be very mindful of the resources that we're given. We try to be very good stewards of the money that we receive. Obviously, the city is very interested in housing individuals and not parking cars, want to be mindful of the need to make sure that, yes, we do have enough parking spaces for the facilities that we put in. We do not want to create, you know, congestion in the neighborhood. That's the last thing that we want to do. But with this site, the first time I saw the drawings and I saw that there were 19 spaces, I was like, wow, that's more than we've got in any of our other facilities. The facility that we referenced in Long Island, we were required in this, again, Long Island, not the city, they required, I believe it was a 50, 50-space parking lot, it's, it's empty, absolutely empty. There's no public transportation around that. There are, none of the residents drive a car in that facility, so there's...
So how did they get around?
They, they use the Uber, Lyft, Asses a Ride, you know, those are just all the different methods that they use.
So does the Uber and the Lyft, does that work with like Medicare vouchers or something? Medicaid vouchers?
It's a new, the, as Crystal mentioned, we just started a corporate account with Lyft. We haven't got anything set up with Uber, but they have just started some new programs in both of those organizations to provide transportation for Medicaid-funded individuals. So we're still exploring with Uber exactly what that setup looks like, but we've started utilizing it with Lyft. It allows them to use our corporate account, you know, to have the rides paid for, so that the residents that don't have the means to, to pay for that, but need the rides to their different appointments that are covered under the programmatic funding, that they can utilize that service.
But so those, those Medicaid-supported Lyft trips are to the doctor, right? That's not just kind of going to your job or going to the store or, right? So, so in a case like this, you're, you're dependent really on the shuttle or the 10-minute walk to the bus, right? And so in Nassau, what about going, going shopping?
This is Crystal John from Well Life. We also have company vans, too. Company, company cars and company vans. So in a lot of our facilities, we have a van that will take the individual back and forth, and a lot of them can travel independently, too. They can make it to their doctor on their own.
No, but how? That's what, make it to the doctor on their own, how, when they're so far away from the...
Yeah, by public transportation, a lot of them.
But, but public transportation is a 10-minute walk, it's a mile, right?
Right, right, and that, right, in Cypress, we will be using the shuttle and/or the Lyft. But I'm saying in other facilities, we have the company van, and we have a company car, and we also, they travel independently in other, in other facilities.
Okay, okay. So I'm picking up on this whole subject of parking. If 19 spaces is actually more than demand, then why do you need, why are you showing 19 spaces?
This is Sheri Tucker again. Don't misunderstand me. I'm just saying, based on what we've experienced, the demand studies, I can't comment, you know, I'm not one that does those types of studies. That's what they found was needed, that's what was put in the plans. So I don't want to mislead you to say that this is just Sheri Tucker's opinion, that, you know, we've not seen that need, so I want to just reassure everybody that we don't need more than that by any means. There is no need for more.
But I, I'm like focusing on the parking because the parking is what's messing up the site plan.
So Chair, as Richard Lobel, as a matter of public record, the EAS demonstrates that the total with-action capacity in the area is 63, which would include 19 with-action onsite parking and 44 existing on-street empty spaces when the study was done, and that the proposed project would create a total with-action demand of 28. So there was an overage when giving into, giving into account utilization, the with-action utilization of the available supply, that there would be a surplus, when accounting for surrounding parking of 35 spaces.
And if you don't account for the...
Right.
Sorry, if you speak, you must come up, and so, otherwise, we don't know what you said.
That's a weekday PM reading.
Okay, so in fact, the, what's being provided on site is, is a shortfall over/under demand. So then one might ask, what are the demand studies based on? Like, in other words, what's, what's the data based on? If it's not representative of the actual use, then maybe the demand study needs to be looked at again.
Well, the, the demand study was made from actual parking counts as well as utilization numbers from other facilities. So it's, it's a, you know, it was, it was done in the area, and the counts remained in the area, so it's, it's accurate, but we can clarify that to the board.
Okay, we'll look again. So, all right. You should look at it again, I would have to say, because that's not what we're hearing in the discussion.
Okay.
That the demand is actually reflecting the actual use.
Okay.
So I don't know.
You gotta get it.
And there's a shortfall, so, right?
But it's not a for-profit development.
No, and it's not a for-profit development.
You know, the shortfall, if there's a shortfall and they're asked to make it up on their site, it's going to contribute to the construction cost that's only reimbursed on a per-unit basis, not taking into account accessory space. So that would be an issue here. They, somebody's got to make up that gap that's going to over...
You're misunderstanding what I'm saying. What I'm, what I'm saying is that it, that based on what we've learned about this particular use, demand doesn't sound like it's actually 28 spaces, that it might be less based on the actual use, so...
No, I understand, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, so that might, so, and, and, you know, because there's this shortfall, you would want to look closer to see whether perhaps the actual demand is more like 15 spaces or something like that, if the data, if the sources of data on which the demand is based are not correct for this project. That, that's what I'm getting at, right?
Amanda Yonati, yes, to pick up on your exact point, I think the demand on the future with action was based on what is required. I don't think there was a demand study based on this use. In the with action, it's based on a total of 28 parking spaces would be required as a result of the proposed development, and the demand is, the demand figure is carried, the 28 is being carried through the analysis. You're right.
So 28 is the zoning requirement?
Right.
That's different than a demand.
I think a demand, you're correct. A demand study needs to be done for this use, when they were just using the required number.
Okay, so, so you guys need to go back to your environmental consultant, traffic consultant, and find out what the actual demand is. That might even result in a further reduction of the parking count, which in the end would help the project, right?
Yeah, and I, I think that they've got this down already, so it should be able to be accomplished fairly readily.
Thank you, that, that was very helpful. Okay, based on zoning, okay. All right, I think we heard, did the neighbor want to speak one last time because we're going to move on?
Please restate your name again.
Judy Cancel Valeria. I just wanted to say that we're just afraid of this being rushed through, because should it impact us negatively or even the residents of the facility, it'll be permanent. I know there's deadlines to be met for everyone involved, but what happens in the end, it's just the building, the structure, and the impact on everybody else. Everyone else is gone, because the project is done, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, all right, so in terms of timing, did you want to add something?
I was just going to say, Sheri Tucker, we won't be gone. We will be there for the duration, so...
Right, no, but I don't think that that's necessarily the point. The size of the building is, will be there in permanence, and whether you're in it or you're not in it, the fact is, the building that gets approved is the building that will be there, so I, I hear the comments. So I'm going to reiterate, all the concerns that were expressed here must be addressed, and the only way to finish up the project quickly is to really address those with gusto and not just kind of like, the reason I can is because more or less I don't feel like it, right? It needs to be addressing it and not coming back with, we can't. And that's how you do it quickly.
Chair, we look forward to addressing everything aggressively. My only fear is that, is that we not, that, that a delay of too long will be fatal to the project, without overstating it.
Right, but again, so, I say it again, if the responses respond, as opposed to saying, "I can't."
Sure.
"I can't" slows the project down, because you heard the concerns. Changing the project to respond to the concerns speeds the response of the board up, right? Okay. So, all right, so our problem is, we have a very full schedule. How much time would you like?
I've spoken to the architect, and I would say that the situation, without exaggeration, is dire. We're happy to submit in a week.
So I'm going to reiterate again, the project has to be responsive to the comments, right?
We know.
And a week, I don't hear response, responding to the comments other than saying we can't.
No, no, I feel that...
And by the way, we have HPD weighing in on this.
Sure.
Who has to review the financials and all that, and so I don't, I've...
Well, Chair, we've spoken...
And I don't, again, I feel very uncomfortable about being pressured by an applicant to come up with a decision that, that as the neighbor said, becomes a permanent result, right? And so, you know, your funding deadlines and all that notwithstanding, right, you arguably could have applied earlier based on all this, or could have answered our questions much more deliberately the last time, right? For instance, the, the drive-through was still there the last, this last submission. Why? We told you to take it out, so, you know, this is sitting.
Chair...
Yeah.
Alan Mogadab, just respectfully, I was not here at the last meeting, but I did listen to the video, and my understanding of your concern was people using the site as a shortcut. Also, being at the community board, they had a concern about people exiting on Cypress Avenue, so we wanted to present this to you with, with the control arms to see if that is something that satisfies your concern of, A, of, you know, people not using the site to, to take a shortcut, and B, the community where they didn't want cars exiting on Cypress Avenue. So we were not, trying not to listen, we were trying to kind of, kind of come up with a solution that satisfies both parties, understanding that the board wants it closed. We, you know, changed that overnight and were able to address it. As far as the landscaping goes, I, we would have to discuss losing a couple units, but we could try to provide that landscaping.
Or parking, if your demand studies, you see, you're talking about a submission, you don't have the demand studies done, there's all these things that aren't done, and so to give us a not-well-thought-out response is not going to help the project. It's just not going to help the project.
I don't want to, Richard Lobel, I don't want to confuse not-well-thought-out with, with quick. And so, to the extent, there are, I understand there are hard deadlines, which we're trying to satisfy, and Chair, if we can either be responsive in that timeframe or we can't, so we're hopeful that we can.
So July, is July 23rd a really bad one? No, so the next hearings, June 25th, we have, submission date was June 5th, 29, 28. July 16th, submission, June 26th, we have 30. July 23rd, submission date, July 3rd, we have 21. That's when it will be.
That is the earliest we can, we can hear.
It's the only way that we can do this, because we have to review the responses.
Okay, can you give us a moment? Obviously, we're going to have to have separate conversations with HPD, and we anticipate that we would have conversations with staff in the interim, so that the final submission made on July 3rd, or hopeful final submission, will be fully responsive. But with that, understanding that the board is gracious to us in this respect, and also understanding that this is a, that this is a facility which deserves a level of deference, we would, we would work with that schedule.
A level of deference created by this board, right? So don't abuse that.
Correct, with, with no abuse intended, Chair.
Don't abuse that, because the board can decide deference is no longer an option.
We understand, Chair. Right.
So July 23rd, continued hearing, July 3rd, submission.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Should we...
Thank you. We need to take a break, but...
There's only one case, one case.
Oh, okay.
And then this, the second call case, it was...
But then we have to second call Ms., the first calendar item and counter her for another time.
Yeah, so let's go.
And I want to thank the neighbor for coming.
Thank you for coming, on this application. July 23rd.
By 10 o'clock. New cases, item number 1, 2017, 12 B.C., 750 Grand Street, Brooklyn. Who's doing this case? Lobels. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board responds to your board member's questions?
Yeah.
Richard Lobel, I'm Sheldon Lobel, PC for the applicant. Good afternoon. Chair, we had a representative at the executive session yesterday for this PCE special permit application. We note that the more weighty comments addressed building and architectural issues, specifically with regards to ADA access. And so the project architect is here and can maybe address some of the board's questions in that regard. I would note that there was some question with regards to the background of the, of the applicant. The subject PCE, this is a legalization application. The subject PCE has been in the site since 1999, so it has been operating for close to 20 years. I would also state that with, as, as per representations from the operator, this has been done largely without incident. This is a valued PCE in the surrounding community. There's no, been no negative, negative testimony entered to the board. We note that the applicant originally, there was a, a building application where... We note that the applicant originally, there was a, a building application where there was a permitted use group nine gym at the site, which eventually evolved into the current PCE use. Upon a supplemental application filed without relation to this PCE, to this PCE, the Department of Buildings upon review stated that they believe that the operations were more akin to a typical PCE, and thus the need for the special permit was raised. There have been interim applications done with regards to this facility, where DOB did look, you know, did through review of the site and subsequent approvals of applications, did accept it as a formerly use group nine gym. However, we understand that now to not be the case, so we're bringing this application to legalize that use. I don't know if the board might want to ask any specific questions of the architect.
Yeah, so my, my, so the architect is here, right?
Sure, yeah.
Can you come up?
My name is Eduardo Escobar, I'm coming for Filthoscano Architects.
Sorry, say this louder and slowly.
Okay, Eduardo Escobar, Filthoscano Architects. I'm sorry, my pronunciation isn't, no.
It's fine, but we just need to hear your name clearly. Okay, so I, my only question, which is really not about so much the, only the gym, but it's this whole building seems to have, the only way for a disabled person to access it is to go into the residential lobby, to go to even the commercial offices on the first floor, right?
Yes, they share the elevator, the lobby, and they share for third floor and cellar, and for upper floor, there's a residencia.
So how-
We have approval plan from DOB-
Yeah.
And they say in May 11, 2016, May 13, 2016, we have approval plan for share the elevator, but I know-
Right.
-it's no use, so combined use, but for this, it's just one for disability customer and employee, not for the regular use for the commercial, no, it's just for disability people.
It's just for the, sorry, the employees and-
And-
Disabled, yes.
So the, is there a security in the residential portion, where somebody comes in and then how do they-
This is, this is a special thing, like car or key is used. Everybody can use down, but not everybody come up.
Ah, I see, okay, understood, thank you.
Okay.
All right, and then you said there was an issue about-
Yeah, there was just a question about the, the square footage of the, of the PCE on page one of the Statement of Facts. It says it's 7991 square feet in the cellar, and on page two, it's 6988. Just wanted to clarify the square footage.
I think we've made the correction on the plan.
Okay. So it should be, what, 69?
Right, so it's 6987.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. And then, the only other question I had was for fire department, so, because we seem to have a conflict there.
Good afternoon again, this is again Inspector Dushinsky from Fire Department. Yes, I did review the submitted documentations. It was mistaken on our part. The system has been tested, and approval was issued on 3/26/19. The Fire Department does not have any objections for this case.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, are there any speakers on this? No? Okay, so then, I'm okay without a firm map, because it's really a built building. Firm maps are usually about buildings that are about to be built, right? This is a built building with an existing use since 1999, so that was our only open issue. So I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, commissioners.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Item number two, 2017, 51 BZ, 51 Warren Street, Brooklyn, uh, Manhattan, sorry.
Manhattan, it's a motion to withdraw. Actually, this is not a PCE in this location.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to make a motion to close, if you have to close, what was never opened.
Close it, or just-
Yes, close, close it.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to withdraw.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Second call item, item number two, one, 27113 BZ, 129 Norfolk Street. The project manager had reached out to the architect, Joe Mealy, and apparently he had a conversation. So it's, I realize that some of the essential components of the alteration proposed under the Building Department application, 30, 320765043, this is to Copper Mechanical, I don't know who they are, were not installed until May 19. Therefore, revise the date of substantial completion to May 19, 2019. I don't know if that helps.
What?
Yeah, I asked Rory to ask them if they were continuing with this application, or they were going to withdraw. He hasn't received a response yet.
All right, so no one, I'm just going to write, no one appeared, because I don't understand what that, just what that means.
Yeah, there was one, yeah.
Right, no one's appeared, but I guess the question is, do we put it on for another hearing, or do you want to vote, having heard nothing from the applicant, or what?
Well, it's an extension of time to complete construction, so-
The fur decision, it's a little-
Expired January 30th, 2019, so according to that.
They needed the extension.
They needed, yeah. So I don't understand Mr. Mealy's response, I don't understand the response from the applicant, represented, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can put it on-
We can put it on for August 6th, because that's a, that's a hearing we have, we have 17 IAs so far. Okay, so we'll put it on for August 6th, we'll have Mr. Levy reach out to the applicant, and maybe get a definitive statement as to whether they want to withdraw, or if not, submit the materials requested at last hearing, their submission will be due by July 17.
Okay, great.
Okay, this concludes the public hearing for June 11, 2019.